Welcome, everyone. It is March 7, 2022, and this is our study session for tonight. A couple of things I need direction from council before we begin our agenda. We have some answered, but some want to do these things in public. And it's going to be easy to just get a poll real quick and see if we have four people that want us to have these sponsorships. We did get a sheet today from Jody. So I think this first one's on it. I don't, and I forgot to, I printed it up and forgot to bring it. But Front Range Community College Golf Attorney asking for us to support. I think it was $1,000. Don't hold me to that. We had an email on that. Bruce, are you yay or nay?
Oh, nay.
Rich?
I'm sorry, what was the dollar amount?
I think it was around 1,000.
Yay.
Yes.
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 Okay. So that's a go for, can somebody, Jody, can you take notes so that you can tell staff?
Yes.
Then today for Westminster Public Schools, their foundation, I had an email asking, they tell me that normally there's a foursome from either council and/or combination of staff or whoever can make it a four. And it is for their foundation, which goes for scholarships. And that is June 15, and it's $1,500.
That, I think, is already on our budget.
I'm not positive if it was or wasn't. So let's just yay or nay. Bruce?
Nay.
Rich?
Yay.
Yes.
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 Okay. So that's good. And that one's not on there, Jody, but I can, that was a phone call. I can send you a note or something.
They canceled their breakfast. So we had $1,500 allotted for them already this year.
So that's a go for whenever they have, back to the person so they know that it's a yes. So they need to know who's, so I don't know who golfs in this group. Does anybody golf?
Badly.
Very badly.
I don't think they care. So if any counselors want to say yes, then we'll fill it with any, I don't know which step.
When, when is it?
June 15. You have some time to look, so.
I'm interested, but don't think I'm going to do good, though.
Okay. Then proclamation for, and I don't know how to say it, the reason day.
The Persian, no, Ruth, I don't know how to say it.
Persian New Year.
Persian New Year, yeah.
So on that one, here's a thought I had. And I know whatever you sent, they've done in the past. And I know from listening to two years with the meetings, they had a lot of proclamations, which I just, I don't, at some point, a proclamation needs to mean something. And should we, as a council, be doing all of them? Just a question I have in my head. There's no right answer. But we have an inclusivity board, which I'm wondering if they could even do more with some of these and help educate and do some things if they're the ones put in contact with these folks. So just my random thoughts as I looked at proclamations.
I think it's fine to make a proclamation if someone asks us. I don't see what the cost or harm of it is.
It takes staff time. A lot of times, there isn't a template. If there is one, then it's just copy, paste it, put it on the stuff, and that's it. It takes our time during a council meeting. I'm just telling you, it's what came through my head. We have a, like I said, inclusivity board that sometimes doesn't know what they should be doing, shouldn't be doing. I just throw that out there.
And I think we've recognized this one for several years. So I'm okay with this one specifically.
I hear your thought process as far as the importance of identifying what a proclamation means. For this one in particular, I'm okay with supporting it. But maybe I'd like to maybe take a study session in the future to really understand like a proclamation and what, like what truly does it mean to us and why we're doing it.
And I didn't mean for anything to be having to decide tonight, but those were just some thoughts I had.
I'm fine with that. I'm just curious, one thing with your thoughts, like what is the official process that people put in for those? Like, I know in the past, when we looked through, like we just did renaming of two facility in a park, prior, when we went through the process of doing the Romans Burger softball fields, it was found that there wasn't really a process for this. And part of the reason they came up with the process was to kind of vet through groups such as the inclusivity board so that inadvertently do something that ended up, you know, being an egg on our face, I guess. If, say, for example, you named a park after somebody and you find out they're not really a good person. So I'm just curious, is there a process that should be looked at so that we're not, I mean, that's, is extra work when you're talking about overwhelming, but at the same time, does it make sense to have more of an official way that people put in for these, knowing that so many groups do it? The other thing that I thought of when you're talking about it in the past, some of these proclamations have been done, not necessarily at council meetings, but they've been taken onsite to events. One that I've seen done was the Rawson House. CASA does something similar where CASA, as an organization, knows how much time it takes for all the different municipalities they cover to do proclamation. So they'll do like one day where everybody kind of shows up, and it's like a big to-do for them. I'm fine with this one because I know we've done it in the past, but I think it's noteworthy to say, you know, how can we streamline this going forward and make sure that we have a good process in place? Understanding there have been asks for proclamations we haven't done for one reason or another or just because it didn't get three or four council members support. So I think a process would be nice.
I know there was one that they even changed the proclamation to what it was asked to be. I'm sure you're okay. So we've got enough people.
I just, oh, I just wanted to second both what Counselor Emmons and Ms. Rattan said. And maybe back to your idea of asking the inclusivity board for some guidance or recommendation on how to, on some parameters for recognizing cultural events and days. And that might be helpful for us so we can, you know, have some clear parameters on yes or no.
Well, it kind of goes back to a question that they often bring as far as what, what things do council want them focusing on? And so when we have things like that and vetting that through that group, it seems to make a lot of sense if it's a cultural kind of proclamation.
Yeah.
Perfect. We have the request for sponsors, list of sponsorships for the past year agreed on. So when they came in, it was easy for all of us to look at that. We got that today. We also got the memberships. And I know Counselor Baker, you brought up CC4CA.
Oh, we didn't even appoint a representative to that when we did the boards and the commissions. We left that one off.
I am. I haven't been able to make any meetings. I had a, along those notes, because I had sent it in after you had asked about this, there's a letter that CC4CA put out about the want for a letter against something that happened, I think, at the federal level to allow oil to be trained into Colorado. I had a constituent ask me why we signed on to that, and I don't recall us being asked about it. I don't know if staff or just by the nature of us being members of that group that they got to put our name on it, because I don't recall being asked about it. But I do think it calls into question, when that group came about, we did not have a sustainability group. And so does it make sense for us to have those funds in that outside group versus maybe reallocating that money to our own sustainability? I'm questioning the usefulness of it. I don't, I wasn't the liaison for long. I haven't been to meeting. I know that Counselor Emmons was prior. I don't know if you have thoughts on it, but I feel like we have it pretty well covered having our own sustainability group.
Yes. So I, I mean, I'm looking at our budgeting for this, and it doesn't list out what we allocate for CC4CA. I, I think having a staff member attend it is helpful. However, I don't know if it needs council's attention, although I did find it particularly interesting because some of the stuff that they brought forward in that group was things they were working at the state level, which didn't come in at the policy level or being brought forward to council. And so I think that it was a good indication for me to understand what was on the docket for, at a higher level, so that we could red flag it for our city if we needed to have a voice or have support for. So I, I mean, I'm impartial. I just found it very helpful to understand and have a pulse on what they were bringing forward at the state level, including county level. So it's up for discussion.
I'd be open to saying it, but I would, I would like to understand the rules around when they could use the cities as a sponsor of something without going to us.
Typically, they ask, and that's why I said I don't understand.
And I don't know when that one came forward, but that one specifically, like I would, I'm not sure I agree with their position on it. So I, as long as we have some sort of rails around it. I signed up for it because we didn't have a representative, and I feel like if we're gonna do it, that we should make sure we understand who's gonna go speak for us and bring things back to us, whether it's staff or one of us. However, it's been difficult for me to go because it's during the workday, and my work schedule has been very busy the last couple of months.
Well, I do like the fact that we have, or that we would have representation there because it can, whether we, you know, agree or disagree, we can have some influence potentially on just helping them shape policy in terms of, you know, what's going to be helpful for the communities that are in the state. So, yeah, I totally understand those, those meetings that are in the workday. Though I don't know if there's, I wouldn't be able to cover it either because if they're in the workday, it's really tough.
I, I object to the $30,000 that we paid to be a member of this group because I don't.
It's $30,000?
Yes.
And that is my understanding too, that it's $30,000.
That's fine. Because we started out at the $15,000 level, and I thought we got bumped up the full membership at one point.
Let's get clarification.
Mr. Lindsay jumped up.
Chris Lindsay, Assistant City Manager. I don't know about the most recent invoice we paid, but what I have, which is also what we provided council back in November when this came up, was $15,000 for CC4CA.
Yeah, and I, I, there, there's some gap in there for me because I recall when we first joined it, we were joined as a, at a partner level, and that was 15,000. And I thought we had bumped up to their full membership, which is 30,000.
I understand.
Yeah. So maybe we never, yeah, if we can, because.
Somebody can maybe check.
Why don't we check now?
And can we do that?
She's stuck.
Well, here's a better question. If it's a 15, that seems like a lot.
Well, and I think as far as relative value, that's what I'm concerned about, too. We have in-house people that can watch.
We have a lobbyist that we pay. How much him? 50,000?
So Barbara just pulled up. Thank you, Barbara. On, on April 12, 2021, we paid CC4CA $15,000.
Okay.
What do we get? Is that just to be at the table?
I, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I believe so, if I recall. So I, I will go back and say, at 15,000, I'm still concerned about the value that we get from CC4CA. You know, because there's, there's other ways that we can track legislation and be involved in that. And, you know, we don't need to.
I just hope it will be brought forward to council. That's my concern. Because some of the things that they talked about, I brought back to council because I was part of the meeting.
Right.
So that's where.
Well, we could, we could.
Our direction from council is that.
Yeah.
If we're not participating, that there's a clear direction from staff and expectation that whatever should be, like the letter, would be brought forward.
Well, my opinion is at $15,000, our staff can, we have sustainability staff now. So I feel like as part of what they do, I would imagine they're going to look at that same state stuff. And then we have state representatives that would, who would be able to lobby to. So I just don't see spending that much money. I didn't even realize it was $15,000 at that. I'm, I wouldn't want to stay in it. That's a lot of money.
Could, could we have from staff, just surely CC4CA has some type of description of.
I'm going to add to that conversation with some of that, if you don't mind, to the group. I did some research on this, and the value, I think, here, or the return, Rich, from that standpoint, sorry, Counselor Seymour, is that it gives us, it's, it's a leverageable organization where having a voice at the table, so they, they're made up of 40 local governments, Groomfield, Northland, Edgewater, Wheat Ridge, et cetera, urban and rural. They've passed, they, they have helped to pass historic climate action legislation at the state and national level. Being a member of this organization gives us that voice at the table, that, which is important. It's, it's much bigger than just attending the meeting. It's influencing and helping to, to guide and shape those decisions that, that get made. That's hugely important, especially now, you know, giving our climate, the climate change that is real, that most people, even our own residents, have voiced to us, right? So their survey, 68% of Coloradans support transitioning to 100% clean renewable energy. 69% say that there's enough evidence of climate change that action must be taken. This organization gives us a, and to me, 15,000 is not much money, particularly since we, we do spend a lot more on other things that I think are not as leverageable, right? So our ability to have that voice at the table at the state and national level is hugely important, and it lowers our costs long-term because local governments like us, we have a disproportionate amount of cost. We take on of the effects of climate change when we don't have a voice. There are long-term effects that we have to pay for, but legislation at the state and national level gives us the ability to spread that cost around. So it's not just local. It gets allocated to state and national. It's hugely important, and I would support this and hope that we can just stay on and maybe we can get more transparency on some of the processes. You know, we can see what, what we can tweak and change of how it works, but let's give it a shot, at least one more shot.
I was sitting upstairs when they brought this forward. Counselor Baker was on the council at the time. I think there was like four cities who were involved. I may be misremembering, but I remember Counselor Baker having a very astute, good point about what change does this really make when really the polluters in the world aren't the US? We certainly have our fair share of it, but what does this control outside of our realm? Really, if you want to make an impact, it's the sustainability things that the city actually has control over. And the only thing that we really have control over is the city, is the things that the city itself does that creates output. I think that's the, you know, always the difficult thing with these kind of groups. I think if you really look at the things that have probably been the most impactful the city has done in the last eight years since they've done this, I don't think that this is biggest bang for its buck. The things that Paul Schmekin and his group are doing that actually are changing the carbon footprint of the city is probably where we're better spending our money.
So continue for this year or?
I wouldn't, I would cut it.
Given the fact that it is so high, I would cut it as well.
Cut. Okay. You've got four cuts, so. All right. That's all I have on my list. Did I forget something? Sorry.
Since we're on the topic, one of the things that I wasn't sure if was still on the group, that Counselor Baker brought up when he was very first back on council, was UNE, that is listed for $2,000. I'm, I know this is some sort of dinner or something they do. They were very heavily politically involved against myself and Counselor Baker in very dishonest ways, in my opinion. I, I don't think that a group like that serves the, the community well. So I would certainly look to cut that off our budget. I feel like some of our nonprofits could better spend that $2,000.
Why, why does political action have, or what does that have to do with their contributions to the city? They didn't support me, but I'm just curious why that would matter.
Because they opposed us. That's really political.
It's not even necessarily that's what opposed.
I think it's an excellent reason.
I, it's not, for me, it's not necessarily that they opposed. It's the fact that they, these groups aren't political groups that we're giving money to. These are nonprofits and people who serve value to the community. A group like that, I'm not sure what value they serve. If they would have attacked one of you, I would feel the same way about it. I just don't see how a group like that, when we are looking at things like after proms and Highland Hills foundations and public school foundations and our arts, I'm not sure, you know, what, how they're even on the list. And I oppose them being on the list, to be honest with you, in prior years before they decided to do a dishonest hit piece on me. So this is consistent with my view of this group in the past. I was not in, not in the majority in the past as far as staying on the list. So if it stays on the list because the majority says so, great. I just, I haven't heard a good public value out of our $2,000 that go to this group.
I can comment on that. On, all these groups do some political work. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast, too. I mean, growing home needs to advocate and so, but I saw this as once, once you play directly, and it's not legislative-wise or influencing legislation per se, but when you, you know, if they had a political action committee that was a separate committee, they didn't even do that. It was, it was UNE. And it was, it was.
But this is a separate, so they have arms, their nonprofit arm is housing. They help a lot of.
Yeah. And then they decided to play in a, in a local election, so then they get to deal with consequences for that.
The political arm did, but not the nonprofit arm.
They weren't separated, though. It did, it just said UNE on the piece.
But they have, so I know them, and they, they have.
Well, then they have, then they have to suffer those consequences. That's part of playing politics, too.
Yeah, it makes sense. I, I'm just curious why that would matter.
Yep. I, the fact that they advocate for the most disadvantaged residents in their community, I still feel like they do bring value to our residents, to our community overall. So given that they have, you know, yes, I understand that they were political, but I still feel like they're still bringing some value to our community members. So I, so I would support that because that's the frame in which I am placing it.
For reasons that one, they would not support.
You got your board. Okay. Is that everything else for tonight?
I have a question.
Yes.
Was there some list of all the contributions we're giving set out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they were set up before.
Because I do not recall getting that.
It was around noon today or so.
But I believe it was set up before, like, I don't know, the last one?
This is not ended discussion.
Okay. If it's not the end of discussion for me.
Yeah, we're scheduled to go on.
Before we get started with the formal agenda and hear from any other council reports or city manager, with the presentations tonight, we are going to move the community survey up to number three and move budget to number four. That way, however long the budget takes us, somebody's not waiting on the outside to give us a report. So if that's okay with everybody, I'll start with council reports. Counselor, is that anything to speak?
Yeah, so last week I had a few more of my in-council, in-office, office hours, and some residents shared some interesting information to me. Today I had some, some more, and one of them was around community events. And they had some great ideas that I'd love to pass on. Jody, I could send you by email what they came up with. But I think it could be a fun way of building community. I have, so I'm, I will be attending the NLC Congressional Conference starting Saturday through next Wednesday. So I'm looking forward to reporting back to council all that I learned and the summary. So you'll get that from me next week. And I'll be attending virtually Monday from DC for Monday's council session. That's all I got.
And you'll need, I believe, permission for that from council since it'll be your third time. So everybody okay?
I would oppose that.
Okay.
Well, one thing I would be interested in with this, with our group is, so Dr. Cog is going to have a board retreat in beginning of April, and one of the focus sessions that we're going to be brainstorming about is housing and how it might relate to transportation within the state and within our allocations for transportation funding. So there's new federal law that allows us to look at some, you know, potentially tying housing to transportation, understanding growth and density in transportation and greenhouse gas emissions, all that combined. And so I don't know if there's a chance before April 4th date to just maybe have a short brainstorming session with our council to, just that I can bring with me there, some of the ideas. I think it's a little more structured.
Yeah. What are you thinking?
So just on what our thoughts are with respect to. So just on what our thoughts are with respect to essentially affordable housing and its relationship to transportation and how funds are allocated. And I, I, I will get, I can get more detail on some of the thinking that they might, some of the prompts that they might provide the board members with.
And also, we need you, we need to give you, if you're the one going to this, the council's guidance on where the council's at.
Yes, and you know what? You're, you're on it as well. You should have the invite. Yeah, but you can, you can attend. So.
It's a good one for you to attend. And all voices are heard at those, but it's great when both the member and the alternate can go because you really hear what they're looking at for the year. And you'll be in different breakout sessions and stuff. So it'd be great if you are able to go.
It is in person, but yeah.
Where is it?
Uh, I'd have to look on my phone.
It's Denver Metro?
Yes, it's probably at the Dr. Cog offices.
And they have a lot of power because they make the recommendations for funding projects, don't they? Isn't that the power of Dr. Cog? Tip funding, yes. It's, it's a powerful, powerful board.
And it's, it's a very diverse board, so representing many, many different cities.
Having shared that for two years, it's a very diverse board. We had some very interesting things when I was on that one. Thanks for going. Council Demont?
I don't have anything.
Okay, for me, I need calendars out. Can everybody tell me if you have March 31st free?
Then why you're asking?
Food?
Riddle, is there a riddle?
I'm not going.
Yes, yes.
What time?
Maybe 6:30?
Free?
Have something right up to that, but.
So seven-ish?
I think it were.
Yeah.
I'm free.
So it is a Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I should be able, I'm free.
We are having our first town hall meeting.
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that.
March 31st, we'll get you place. And please let them know, know earlier than 6:30, even if it's 6:45-ish. We're looking at places such as Westview Center, the MAC, not the big room, but one of the rooms that has a divider, so it'd be plenty of room down there. The Grange, any place that has enough for 75 to 100, but that we don't feel like fish swimming in an ocean with only 250 in a group that, or a place that has 250 seating. So the format for that is very simple. I will introduce all of you, and the next 90 minutes are open to the public. It is their night to ask us questions, to give us suggestions, to whatever. I know what all the boards you represent. So if there's a question that comes up that falls into your wheelhouse of where you've been spending your time with meetings, you'll get that question. After the person that should answer the question first go around. If somebody has something, we'll just round robin it and we'll get right back. We aren't into speeches, we aren't into long detailed anything. We are there to hear what the public has to say and we'll be short and crisp.
Will there be an opportunity to maybe break out into smaller tables with community members? So that, I know in some cases folks have our, you know, maybe the introverts are less, you're less willing to get up in front of a room of a lot of people, but might be more comfortable around the table.
I haven't had trouble with that over the years because I start out with them telling us who they are and which neighborhood they're from, so we get a good feel of where all people are at. And once they've said their name in the room, it has, I've never had a shy person. We'll watch for that, and we can certainly do that maybe next time around. But this time, I just want them to understand this is their forum. We can either stand there and stare at each other, or they can speak to us.
I also kind of like that idea just because everyone's trying to gain information from everybody, right? Like that's, we're all discussing together. I hear what you're saying though, because I think staff did it, obviously pre-COVID, and they had stations. And I thought it was good, I thought they were productive. However, I felt, even being as a resident, I felt like I wanted to hear all information because I, they were talking about transportation over here while this, they were talking about the airport over here. I wanted to hear both, but I couldn't be in both. And so I think having that just unanimous conversation is just better.
Okay, we're good for our first one. Yahoo?
Are we planning on promoting it?
That's up to our staff, so.
Yeah, so following tonight, we will put something together and we'll get that out very broadly. We'll get it up on the, on the website through all of our communication channels, of course, out to, to all of you. Then you can also help disseminate the information.
Council Smith? I'm.
Both the mayor and I were on the quarterly Jeffco BCC. What's the B stand for? County Commissioners or something, yeah, something. Should be JCC, Jeffco County Board of County Commissioners. Okay, so it should be JBCC. Yeah, CCC. So Jefferson County Board of County Commissioners. It's a very lively and packed with information. Arvada has identified a site for their homeless north end location.
It's really a good site.
Yeah, and so, you know, this is going to be addressing, you know, core issues. So it's not just going to be a pass through site. Had discussions on the opioid settlement that we've been well updated on. Wildfire updates, Jeffcom and defensible state space discussions, that's important. The, and then a decision of what cities are going to host which topics throughout the rest of the year. The lightning round is always very informative, find out what other cities municipalities got going on. But the biggest thing that came out of this that I asterked is there are four cities in Jefferson County that are looking for a city manager right now, so.
Four?
Four.
Which ones?
Mark Devon in Arvada just two weeks ago. Golden is looking for a city manager. They're saying manager, it was Friday, this last Friday was last day. Littleton is looking for a city manager as we are. So that's just in Jefferson County. So, and then a report from Sheriff Schrader, and he mentioned that he's been booked to come chat with us too. The good news there is, the good news, bad news, good news, bad news is that he's got the budget to open up another floor of the jail. The, the bad news is everyone's, you know, he doesn't have his staff to open it. So they still have intake limitations on that, and he's going to fill us in on when he visits that too. The good news is they are recruiting heavily and working on that part. And they have, they have rearranged some things and they've up, up the bed count. And so they've off sided all the people who are work release, you know, low, low level offenders and people that go out during the day and work anyway. So instead of using jail beds from them, they've off sided that. So that's been able to give him a little bit of leeway on the in and out intake. So he's hoping to see some light at the end of the tunnel on that too. So that's the big, that's the high point of that meeting. So that's all I had this last week.
Council Baker?
I really would, as I sent out earlier, I really would like to have a meeting where we talk about our contract advisor for the new downtown. And I'd like to do it as soon as we can possibly schedule it. I think it's vitally important moving ahead.
Anything else?
Laramie and Company, correct?
Laramie and Company, yes, sir.
And for me, I had the youth advisory panel last week, and their energy, I love them. They are so good. And starting tomorrow, I will have four days of Zoom calls from every hour on the hour we get off loan and get on the other because we are not going to DC. Personally, we are doing it virtually to meet all the representatives, talk to them about, this is the Northwest Commissioners and Mayors Coalition, and talk about Highway 7, 119, 287 and rail. So tomorrow, we'll be talking to Bennett Perlmutter, who's one other one. And then we'll be talking to the Federal Highway Commission. We'll be talking to the Federal Rail Committee Group. Just a ton. I'll try to take notes and if anything, knowing with what we're dealing with, with the Ukraine issue, we know at any given moment, there might be votes being taken or folks needing to be in other meetings. So we know what we have planned, we will do our best to do it. And if we can't, we can't. So we can always meet some of these folks when they come back into town. So that's my week coming up. That brings us to our first, oh, excuse me, city manager. Do you have anything?
No, thank you, mayor. I was going to talk about the agenda, but thank you for the adjustment. That's perfect.
That brings us to presentation of population demographic trends.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Andrew Spurgeon, Long Range Planner in Community Development. And we are joined tonight by Nancy Gideon from the Colorado State Demographers Office. We also have through the virtual link, Elizabeth Garner, who actually is the state demographer. We do not, as a city, have a demographer on staff, some say do, but we, we work with our partners and the resources available. We know there's been some questions from this council about population trends, and it's really great that, that council is thinking about that because the changing nature of our population impacts pretty much everything the city does. I'm, of course, thinking about growth and development in my wheelhouse, but really it impacts everything the city does. The services and programs from our PRL department, our public safety, really everything. So again, this is Nancy Gideon from the State Demographers Office, and she's going to present for about 15 to 20 minutes and then take questions or comments if needed.
Please have a seat. Or stand, whatever, whatever your best.
Okay, like if she stands, maybe we'll be 10 minutes.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us. As Andrew said, my name is Nancy Gideon, and I'm with the State Demography Office. I'm a demographer on staff, and Elizabeth Garner, who is remote, she is the state demographer. And I'm very happy that she's here to join us as well. So we are part of the Department of Local Affairs in the state government, and the demography office is actually a statute. We are created to provide data for the entire state and for all the local governments. So it's wonderful that you know that we exist, thank you, and that you invited us here tonight. So from our perspective, we look at population and growth trends and demography from a couple of different perspectives. We're, we're looking at the entire state and some of our data sources. Our main data source is the Census Bureau. And as I'm sure you're aware, we just completed, we, the entire country, completed the decennial census, the 2020 census. And the first data had been released in August, and that was, it's a section of all the data that's available. This data that was released in August was for redistricting. So that's how Colorado knows how to create its eighth congressional district. It was the results of the census that, because Colorado was growing faster than other states in the country, that we got our eighth district. But the census data is very foundational, the decennial census data, that is, to all the work we do. So in between the censuses, so the next one will be in 2030, we use data from the state to understand the population. And that data is basically the components of change, births, deaths and migration. So as we go through these slides, we're going to see a lot of information that came directly from the census and then how we interpret it and how we use it in relation to those three components of change, birth, death and migration. And later we'll have lots of information about age because for us, we believe age, aging, children, adults, seniors is one of the most important things about a population. So next slide, please. So some of the overall trends. The United States grew between 2010 and 2020 at about 7.4%, which was actually the second slowest growth rate on record. Only in the 1930s did our percent change was, was lower than it was in this decade. Now granted, we increased by 22 million people, but that rate of change was actually a little bit slower. And Colorado definitely outpaced the nation. We grew at 14.8%. And as I mentioned, we gained our eighth seat in Congress. We were sixth of all the states in the country for our percent change, that 14.8%. And in terms of actual absolute numbers, we were ninth. And of course, some of the larger states, Texas, Florida, would have beaten us out on that. But Westminster, Westminster had a healthy growth at 9.6%, less than the state as a whole, but for a supper rabbit's age and size, you gained about 10,000 people over the course of that decade. Next slide. So statewide, all 64 counties in the state had different things going on. This is a map showing those 64 counties. And the counties that are shaded red, orange or yellow all gained population in this decade. But all the ones shaded in blue lost population. So even though Colorado as a whole grew 14.8%, not everywhere did. You notice a lot of those blue shaded counties on the eastern plains, in the San Luis Valley, in the south central, and even in northwest Colorado. But those dark red counties are all along the Front Range. The bulk of the growth in the state occurred in the Front Range, down from Colorado Springs, El Paso County, all the way up north through Weld and Larimer, so Greeley and Fort Collins, and of course, Metro Denver, of which Westminster is a part. Next slide. So you already have this presentation in your packet. So when we come up to these slides with a lot of numbers and data, we're just going to, that's your, that's your reference. And I chose for these slides some things to compare with. Now, from our office, we do a lot of our work at the county level. We get the births and deaths and a lot of the migration data at the county level. And Westminster is one of our multi-county jurisdictions, which we love because we have to do extra work. In a good way. And what's so fascinating is that the two counties you are in, Adams and Jefferson, are sort of on different trajectories. You'll notice that both of them did increase their population this past decade. And they even have the 2000 to 2010 data on here as well for reference. But in this past decade, Adams grew at 17.7%, faster than the state as a whole. Jefferson grew at about 9%, which considering its growth in the previous decade, was pretty remarkable. Westminster, again, that 9.6. And then I put on two of your neighbors who are about the same size as Westminster and are adjacent to you. Arvada, Arvada grew faster, as did Thornton. And Thornton is the larger of the three of these communities. Household size, the 2020 number is somewhat preliminary, and it has to do with a lot of statistical stuff that I can't get into today. But in general, household size in Westminster has been decreasing, as it has been nearly statewide. But from 6.2 persons per household in 2000, and we're estimating that 2.47 persons per household in 2020. So that's something to consider. Next slide. So as I mentioned, we, we talk about these components of change, births, deaths and migration. And this chart shows all three of those going back to the year 1970. And this is for the state as a whole. Now, the blue bars are showing what's called natural increase. That's the difference between the births and the deaths. So that's if nobody else moved in or moved out, that's the increase of people each year due to natural increase, births minus deaths. And it's fairly steady, though you will notice for the past 10 years or so, it's been decreasing a bit. Those blue bars are getting a little bit shorter each year. We're still. We're still gaining people each year, but less each year. And we'll go into that a little bit next in the next slide. But the red bars, that's the net migration, that's the people coming in and out. And Colorado had net out migration in the 1980s, mostly in the late 1980s. And I believe there was an oil and gas bust. I believe there were some economic situations in Colorado that were sort of unique to the state, and people were leaving the state. But look at the 90s. I think they made up for all of those net out migrants with the growth in the 90s. Then we have the early 2000s, there was another small recession. But then you'll see the net in migration to the state has been somewhat steady through the 2000s, but you'll definitely see it's been decreasing as we get to 2020. And 2020 was an extraordinary year, mostly because of the pandemic. We did have an increase in deaths, we did see a decrease in births and migration. Despite the news about lots of people moving everywhere, in terms of people going someplace as a permanent resident, sort of decreased. We saw some of our slowest numbers in 2020. We anticipate some that will pick up again, especially as international borders open, you know, migration from international countries. Next slide. So the births and deaths. Now, the lines in the shades of red are for Jefferson County, and the lines in the shades of blue are for Adams County. And like I said, they're sort of on these different trajectories. But let's start with death, natural part of life, death. Now, the two lines on the bottom are representing deaths. Now, Adams County is the smaller county and has had fewer deaths, but just like Jefferson, they've been gradually increasing each year from 1980 to 2020. And that's perfectly natural as our populations age. Births, on the other hand, you'll see back in the 1980s, Jefferson County, in that sort of dark red, almost brown shaded line, had more births than Adams. But sometime around the year 2000, Adams started having more births per year. So Jefferson, it's sort of, sort of even, almost the same number of births each year, but slightly declining. Now, even though Adams had a large increase since, say, between 2000 and 2007, and it looks like 2007 was probably the peak, probably in Adams County in 2007 was the most number of births. And statewide, that's true as well. 2007 had the most number of births in the state. And ever since then, there have been fewer each year. And you can see that in that Adams County blue line. So to think about it, the most number of babies ever born in the state was 2007, and it's 2022. So they're all turning 15 this year. So if you think of that class, the sophomores, freshmen sophomores, every class behind them likely to be a bit smaller. So that's, so then when we look at that natural increase, when you look at the two red lines for Jefferson County, you'll see that they're sort of narrowing, that natural increase has been declining. And even though it's not quite as drastic, Adams County is also, especially for the past few years, seen fewer people gained due to natural increase each year. Next slide. So we talked about births and deaths. Now, this is migration, and we have both counties on this map. As we noticed before, statewide, the 1980s weren't so great for the state in terms of people leaving. And so in the late 1980s, from 85 to 90, you see an outmigration. Now, I need to tell you about this. You'll notice in the year 2000, Adams County had a huge outmigration. They actually went into Broomfield. That's the year that Broomfield became a county, so we had to move them. And Boulder also lost people too. So Broomfield, when it became a county, so don't worry, there wasn't anything bad that happened in Adams that year. But you'll notice that there's some different patterns between Adams and Jefferson. Jefferson County was having outmigration in the 2000s, while Adams continued to have inmigration. But Jefferson gained in migrants during the 2010s, which we did notice. So when we looked at the population change in Jefferson between the 2000s and then the 2010s, there was a large increase in people in the 2010s in Jefferson. That did not fit its past trend of the past decade. Next slide. So another thing that came out with this census data was just two age groups. Again, this was the redistricting data, which has to do with voting. So the census gave us information on the population 18 and over and everyone under 18. We are still waiting for the full range of age data from this decennial census, and hopefully that will be out sometime this year. But right now, what we can tell is that we have a very interesting situation where there are counties that have fewer kids, essentially, children, anybody under the age of 18, fewer now in 2020 than they did in 2010, even if they gained population. And we noticed that those births in some places were declining. Well, we're sort of seeing it. Jefferson County and Boulder were the two Metro Denver counties that have fewer kids 10 years, than, fewer kids now in 2020. And now 2020 is already two years ago. But we take what we can get when it comes to data. And, but Weld, Weld saw a huge increase, one of the largest in the state of the under-18 population. But in terms of school planning, in terms of lots of things, who's your future workforce going to be? We're keeping track of the under-18 population. Next slide. So again, here's one, this is for your reference later. But you'll see Westminster did, does have fewer kids in 2020 than they did in 2010, even though the population increased by 10,000. That, all that growth was in the over-18 population. And the under-18 population as a percentage of the whole population has been decreasing, as it has statewide and in both counties and the neighboring jurisdictions. But Westminster at the moment actually has a slightly lower percentage of that under-18 population than the state as a whole. Next slide. And some of the data on race and ethnicity was also released. And I found it interesting to see that Westminster is one of the more diverse cities in the North Front Range, or in the North Metro Denver area. It matches somewhat Adams County. Adams County is a bit more diverse than Jefferson County. And your largest non-white, non-Hispanic population are people of Hispanic or Latino origin. Next slide. So when we talk about migration, the people moving in and out, we have noticed a correlation with the number of jobs in the state. But people typically move, especially interstate or from abroad, for jobs, for employment. And we've seen that when there are more jobs, more new jobs in the state, it's when Colorado tends to have more inmigration. So the next two slides, next slide, are talking a bit about the pandemic, these past two years. How are things going? And statewide, we know that we have not quite gotten back to the same level of employment that we had in February 2020. But that change is different for jobs of different wage rates. It's so fascinating that, you know, we're back at this two-year anniversary of when things really changed. So two years ago, the number, the jobs that felt the greatest impact, the more loss of jobs, were some of those lower-wage jobs. So that's the yellow line on this graph. And we see both Colorado and the US, the US is the dotted line, Colorado solid. The yellow line is the lower-wage jobs. The blue line are mid-wage jobs, and the green line is high-wage jobs. So the point just being that, yes, we have not quite recovered this to the same number of jobs that we had two years ago, but that different jobs of different wage levels have recovered at different rates. Next slide. And in the same way, different parts of the state have recovered at different rates. As of December 2021, Colorado had regained about 89% of the jobs that it had had in February 2020. But different metro areas of the state have recovered at different rates. Colorado Springs apparently has exceeded the number of jobs it had in 2020. Denver Metro is about 93%, but really, it's only at 62%. So it's just something that we've been tracking, that with the pandemic, to note, where is the recovery of jobs been? Because we know it will affect migration. Next slide.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
In that chart, is, do you have data for Westminster's? I see you have city data.
No, actually those, sorry, two, those are for the MSA, so metropolitan statistical areas. So the Denver Metro is actually a 10-county region. We don't get it at the small city level.
I had a question on two slides back. Should I ask it now or later?
Okay.
I noticed that there was a pretty high projection for 2025 jobs. It was the net migration and job projection. So just kind of curious, what was the calculation for that, because it does shoot up at 2025 and then...
Well, a lot of that actually has to do with our aging population, that there's going to be a lot, and we'll see it in some future slides. There's going to be a lot of people who are going to be hitting their 65th birthday. And that doesn't mean they have to retire, but we tend to see less people in labor force in those higher age groups. And as Colorado's population ages, we're anticipating more people leaving the labor force. But those jobs are still going to exist, and we're anticipating a need to fill those jobs. And so we're, the model is showing that we're likely to have more in migrants because we're going to have more jobs than perhaps people to fill them. Yes, and there's a lot more that can go behind that, and that could be a whole 20-minute discussion in and of itself. But that's the basic premise for some.
So on the, the years that we're already at, when you look at those job numbers, so obviously, future, you're making some calculations. But current years, are those based off of jobs filled or actual jobs available? Knowing that we've heard a lot from the business community that they're having a hard time filling jobs. And even in my employer, I know that we've had a hard time with candidates or even staying because there's so many jobs available that they, you know, might find something a week later that pays more and hop ship. So what is that based off of for current?
This is simply the change of jobs. So if, and it's over a five-year period. So when we see that very small bar in 2010, that's during the Great Recession, that the number that a lot of states actually had net loss of jobs during that time. Colorado had a little bit of a gain, and it's simply the subtraction of how many of their jobs there were in, say, 2015 minus those in 2010.
But when you say job, though, how are you, what's the measurement? Was this taxpaying people who were employed? I mean, where are we giving the measurement? Does that make sense? Like, are they actual people who, you know, are employed?
Yes, it would be people employed because to measure the job, it has to be filled. So a lot of this is coming from what we call the QCEW, Quarterly Census of Employment and Wages, which is sort of the foundation for unemployment insurance, but it's just, yeah.
That helps because I'm just curious if these are, including the unfilled, available jobs. So there's, this doesn't necessarily account for the positions available that people haven't taken.
Right, and it doesn't also then account for the people who maybe want a job and can't get a job. So it's just job and person match. Yeah, and I can add a later, send you some extra information about that. So the jobs in Westminster, we do have information on this. This is from an application called On the Map, which is fabulous. And you can get data from this for all sorts of jurisdictions, from counties to cities. Sub-county area is fabulous. It's based, it's a product of the Census Bureau, and it has employment information, and it has where workers live and where workers are employed. So in Westminster, in 2019, again, it takes a while to process the data, the most current available is 2019, there were about 53,000 jobs located in Westminster city limits. Also, living within Westminster city limits were about 62,000 people who work. Only about 10% of the people who live in Westminster hold a job in Westminster. And so those two green bubbles that overlap is showing the people who live and work in Westminster. And different communities throughout the entire state have different proportions of that. Some places like Boulder have more jobs than people, and so more people are commuting into Boulder. For example, Denver typically has more jobs than people who live there, and so people are coming into Boulder, like Denver, sorry. But what I found interesting about Westminster is that most of, even though it looks like there's such a small percentage of people who live and work in the same place, and you would think, people are driving everywhere, people are leaving to go to their job, and other people are driving in to fill jobs. What I found, because this application is so fabulous, it does things by distance as well, that, let's see, I need the fine print. Of the people who live in Westminster and have jobs, only 9% go further than 25 miles. So a lot of the people who live in Westminster, they're working in Denver, 23% work in Denver. 21% work in Adams County, another 21% work in Jefferson County. That, I think this is more a function of the funky boundaries of municipalities, that people really aren't going that far, that you can live in Westminster and work in Broomfield, and you could be going five miles. And so even though it looks like there's probably a lot of back and forth, and, and yes, there are people on the roads, the residents of Westminster aren't, for the most part, traveling very far to their employment. It's a little bit different for those who are employed in the city. About 18% are traveling longer than 25 miles to get to their job in Westminster. Next slide. So when we talk about jobs, we have to talk about housing. And housing obviously has been huge in the news because it's expensive, and it's, some people are having a hard time getting it. And so one of the things we have been tracking is how many new housing units have been built each year in the state. And then putting on top of that, well, how many new households have been formed? Or would we expect to have been formed? And a new household could be formed when a high school kid moves out and gets his or her first apartment, or when a new family moves into the state, that's a new household. And the black line is indicating those households, and the red lines are showing the number of new housing units built. And the red lines, as it has been throughout the United States, but definitely in Colorado, we saw a huge slowdown in the number of housing units built around the time of the last recession, 2008, 2009, 11, 12. It took a while to start building back up. During that time period, though, households were still being formed. So we are wondering, we are speculating that, well, perhaps this is contributing to the housing crunch that the state is seeing. Also, we know that in the last decade, from 2000 to 2010, the state produced over 400,000 housing units statewide. In the following decade, 2010 to 2020, it was only about 278,000. But during those two decades, the state of Colorado gained roughly the same number of people. So we're tracking this, you know, we don't know what's the right number of houses to be built or how to get houses built at the same time that people need, we don't know that. But we have this data and we're seeing these patterns. Now, when it comes to Westminster, next slide, please. Got it, okay. Westminster actually built more housing units this past decade than they did the previous decade, as did Jefferson County, which beats the trend for the state, or is different than the trend of the state. Adams County, on the other hand, they built 30,000 units between 2000 and 2010 and had 23,000, but still a slightly fewer this decade. So we're watching that statewide, but Westminster was one of the places that built almost an equal number decade over decade. Next slide. So age, the most important thing. Age affects everything. It affects your preferences, what you buy, where you live, where you shop, whether you participate in the labor force, whether you have a job, whether you retire, it affects your income. Next slide. Thank you. So in Colorado, right now, this is a, this is representing everybody who is in the state of Colorado in the year 2021 by their age. So on the far left, we have babies, we have children. And on the far right, we have people age 100 and over. And so every person is represented by their age. Now, you'll see these red bars, those are the tallest. And we have the most, of all the ages, from zero to 100, we have the most 28-year-olds in our state right now. And so if you think there's a lot of millennials... And again, this chart is actually color-coded by generations. So the millennials are indicated in red, Gen X, which is small and depressed, is green, and then the Baby Boomers, which previously, the Baby Boomers had been the largest cohort of people in the state. And the black line on this chart indicates the age 65. And 65 doesn't, well, 65 does trigger certain benefits, social security, different things like that. It doesn't mean you have to retire, because people can do whatever they want at whatever age. But Colorado is seeing far more people in older age groups than it ever has before. But Colorado is seeing far more people in older age groups than it ever has before. And a lot of that has to do with the Baby Boomers aging into the over-65 population. You'll also note on the far left, where we have the children, mentioned earlier that there was the most number of births in the state in the year 2007. And like I said, those kids are now 15. So every year since then, there have been fewer, there are fewer and fewer kids. Again, something school districts will want to keep in mind. Next slide. So when we look at Adams and Jefferson, and it looks like we're missing a little something there. But here is the age composition of both counties. Adams is the blue bars, Jefferson is the orange bars. And again, babies to the left, seniors to the right. And you'll notice Adams County has a younger population. It has more people in those younger age groups, especially the children. And there's a peak around early 30-year-olds. Whereas Jefferson County has much more of an older population, which real high point in about the age 60, 65. So the two counties have very different compositions. And Westminster is sort of right in the middle of them both. You have trends that are showing both ways. Next slide. When I looked at this one, I kept thinking, if I stared at it, something would pop out. Figure out how to do that, how to put in an image. State of the art. What am I supposed to see?
Scary Halloween.
So when we look at these age groups and look out 10 years into the future. So it's, gosh, it's only eight years now. But from 2020 to 2030, we're anticipating statewide about an increase of another 700,000 people to the state of Colorado. But it's going to be in very different age groups. On the far left, we've got the children, the under 18. And the number that we have in 2020 is pretty much the same as we are expecting in 2030. But if you look at the far right, that 65 and over, there's going to be 300,000 additional people in the state who are in that 65 and over age group. That's almost 50% of the increase of people in the entire state. We're going to see a little bit of an increase in the 18 to 24-year-olds, more of an increase in that 25 to 44, not so much in the 44 to 64. But definitely, the largest growth rate of an age group is going to be in that 65 and over. So when we look at our two component counties, next slide.
I'm still shocked by 130, like overly optimistic.
I really, I forgot to, okay, this is, it should be 65 and over. It's when I, that was my mistake.
That's max, you can't pass that, you can't pass that.
Accurial just doesn't work.
120, but then I upped to 230.
You never know.
So Adams County, though, is going to, we're anticipating over the 10 years from 2020 to 2030, an increase of about 84,000 people. Again, their child population, not going to change too much. We're going to see big increases in their 25 to 44-year-olds. In fact, in absolute numbers, that's where the most of their population is going to be of these five age groups. Their second highest is going to be in that 65 and over. But next slide, we look at Jefferson. Jefferson's actually seeing some decreases in three of its age groups. It's going to have a large increase in 65 and over, and moderate increase in the 25 to 44. But overall, Jefferson County is anticipated to gain about 30,000 people over the decade. 41,000 of them are going to be in that 65 and over age group. Basically, every person net gain of people in Jefferson County is going to be in that 65 and over age group. That they're going to have fewer children, fewer young adults, fewer Gen X, the 45 to 64-year-olds, a little bit of a gain in the 25. But what does a community need to do when they know that all their additional population for the next decade is likely not to be in the labor force? But that they're still going to have the jobs, still going to have everything else? So again, something to consider. Yes?
Is that, is the forecast based off of linear trending? Or are you doing some nonlinear stuff, taking in a lot of different factors?
A lot of it is tip-taking the age groups that we have now and aging them out 10 years to the future. So it's simply, these people probably already live here. They're just 55. And that in the next 10 years, they'll be 65. It's not necessarily that there's people in those older age groups moving in. It's simply, we're all having birthdays, and as years, that they're already here.
So is net migration one of the factors?
Net migration is in there. And a lot of that has to do with understanding what jobs might need to be filled and that if these 65 and over are retiring, then bringing people in. And again, we can, I can send you more.
So there are multiple factors, not just, not just the existence of your.
Do we at all think about, like, household mobility? Like, because of the cost of housing, people are staying in place more that have factor into it?
It can be, and yeah, we, we're looking at it at a very top-down sort of macroeconomic level. And the individual choices that a household might make due to cost of housing, due to this and that, especially in counties and jurisdictions, we don't have the knowledge to project that. We're showing what could be. And that's the decisions of local governments that can help figure out what would be best for our community in those different choices. So next slide. So migration, just quickly. As I mentioned earlier, since the pandemic, migration has been in a decline. We have had far fewer people moving into the state than we have in previous years. And we do attribute most, much of that to the conditions of the pandemic. But when migration does start up again, we expect the similar trends that we have seen. A lot of our migrants do come from California, Texas, Illinois, Florida, New York. They are higher-cost states. Some people might consider Colorado to be more affordable. But also, those are just the largest states. And so numerically, we're just going to have more people from California and Texas regardless. But yes, this idea that we're anticipating, as we say, levers from the labor force, people retiring, people opting out of the labor force, mostly due to aging and retirements, and that we're expecting that to drive some of this migration in because there will be jobs here to be filled. Next slide. So we have population forecast out to the year 2050. We anticipate the state will gain about 1.8 million people between 2020 and 2050. And 1.6 million of that will be on the front range. Again, we'll see lots of counties, mostly in the rural east and south, that will actually be losing population during this time period. So next slide. To sum up, the major trends. Colorado is still growing, but just much more slowly. The births are down, deaths are increasing. Migration and mobility is slowing. And we have to keep in mind that sometimes, I mean, Colorado, everybody loves Colorado, everybody moves to Colorado. But we have found that our housing prices compared to the rest of the country are perhaps the fifth highest. That's going to make it more difficult to attract people to the state. And what's that going to do to our labor market? We know we have concentrated growth. So much of the growth in the state is on that front range. Aging, we have to keep that in mind. And because we know it impacts everything. And statewide, definitely, we're having increasing racial and ethnic diversity in the state. Next slide. So this is our caveat. We can't see into the future. We don't know what's really going to happen because there's pandemics. International migration is a huge variable. And at the state level, we have no control over that. That's a national-level thing. But international migration has been, people who are international migrants have made up something like 20% of the migrants to the state over the past 10 years. So it's a large component of our population. And it's something that we at the state level have no control over. But housing, that's going to play a role. Water in Colorado is a big deal. But all these other factors are, this is sort of our caveat. These could affect our forecast. That may not happen because of some of these things. The next slide. So that concludes the presentation. And if there's time, Andrew, I can take questions or however you would like to proceed.
Leave that up to the mayor, who she prefers to.
Yeah, so from just the numbers you put and what we know of our own water caps, from 2000 and on, the vast, really, majority of our population increase has come from, like, apartment renters?
That's data that we don't have necessarily. Because in terms of your housing stock, how much of a single family, how much is the rental, how much is apartments, things like that, we don't have good numbers on that, but.
Well, you can infer from the numbers.
Right, well, and just even looking around the city, knowing that in downtown Westminster and in different places that I have seen apartment buildings going up. And that as a share of the new growth in housing units, has apartments been sort of the majority?
I would say 90%.
Okay.
Haven't they been 90%?
We should have the numbers ourselves with all the housing units over the past 10 years.
I don't have that at my fingertips. We can get that.
Yeah.
And Dr. Cog, it's my, I've been led to believe that Dr. Cog came up with a number for the population of Westminster in 2040 of 151,000 people. Are you really familiar with that number or how they got it? Or you deny?
No, 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 I mean, we work with Dr. Cog. We don't necessarily do municipal forecasts. We will do forecasts for counties because that's where we have the best data. And I did write down our forecast for Adams and Jefferson. Because at municipal level, so much of what you could be depends on what your land use is and depends on what you allow to build. You know, if you, so Jefferson County, as example. We only see Jefferson County increasing, they're currently at about 582,000 people. And we see them increasing to maybe 636 over the next 20 to 40 years. And a lot of that has to do with, I've heard from people saying that Jefferson County sort of built out, that any of the developable land is built. And so any of the growth that they have could be from infill development, could be if they decide to have a whole bunch of babies and have an increase in their children population. But Adams County, on the other hand, has lots of developable land. And we know that Brighton and Commerce City, Thornton, obviously, have been building lots and lots of houses. And so knowing how much land they have, we have their projection of much, much higher. We have them exceeding Jefferson, even though Adams has always been smaller population-wise than Jefferson. We see in around 2030 or 2040, Adams County surpassing it. So it has to do with them, and in terms of, well, is it going to be Thornton? Is it going to be Commerce City? Who's going to gain that population? That we step back from because we don't know the exact land use patterns or what's going to be permitted or how much land's available, things like that at the local level. So we're looking at the jobs population mix for what the county is going to bring. So the Westminster, so basically, to your point of, we don't have a number for Westminster. We can work with staff and with council to come up with some trends. And it would be based off of what we see happening in Adams and Jefferson. But we don't create municipal projections on our own. We would do it in collaboration with that city.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So that is something that could, that you could do with our staff?
Yes.
As we talk through the 2040 plan and prepare for potential growth? That's interesting.
But I don't think we need a, I don't think we need, okay, like a demographer to do that.
Oh, no, not necessarily, yeah, because local.
No, I mean, we know our boundaries, we cannot annex any land. We have all but no land to build on, so.
Right.
Common sense says, of course, the growth is going to Adams County. They have empty land.
Right. And yeah, and that's, it's exactly when you have, yeah, when you know what your land is, you know, you know, if you have constraints, if you have constraints with water or roads, anything like that, you can factor that in, and you will be able to determine what you would anticipate your growth to be.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. On the census data, so sometimes they release data in between the census years?
Yes.
When do those happen and why? So when, so I'd see a Westminster population change from census that's not in a census year.
Right. So the decennial census, 2020, that's when they send out the surveys, the questionnaires to everybody. And that's supposed to be a complete count. In between years, they have a program called the American Community Survey. And previously, there had been something in the decennial census called the long form, where one in six households would get, in addition to the, just the basic, where you have blah, blah, blah. You'd get, how long does it take you to commute to work? Do you have a kitchen in your house? Da, 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 just what is your income? The long form, all the very interesting details. So the American Community Survey has sent out random samples. So 3% of the population get this questionnaire every year since the year 2005. So in between time, if you see census data, and sometimes they just abbreviate it, ACS, that's the random sample. That's the, it's not a complete count. It's taking that 3% of the population who was filled at that survey. And so that generates population numbers. Our office generates population numbers once a year. The Census Bureau actually generates its own estimates in between censuses. So you're likely to see lots of different numbers. But each source is sort of coming at it from a different way, and they're all valid. Any other questions? Thank you so much for taking time to be with us tonight, it was very interesting. Yes, and please do contact us, and I contact the information's there. If you have any questions, it is our role to help and provide information. And if there was anything that you couldn't answer tonight, please just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you okay? Next up. Presentation of short-term rentals. Exciting topic.
Short, short-term, though.
We're going to have a short, short-term rental presentation. I didn't know this was the dad joke. Age, it's what happens.
Good evening, council. I guess I'll, I'll inter, maybe there's someone who doesn't know Eric Otzelberger. Hard to believe, but maybe there is someone. Dave Dowding, Director of Community Development. Eric Otzelberger is our manager of operations and community preservation. And I think part of being operations means that he gets some of the, all the stuff that I don't want to do and some of the most interesting stuff in the department. So Eric has been collecting some data, some data, for a few years now. And we just want to have a very high-level discussion with council, perhaps make a proposal on how, how to proceed if that's what you want to do on continuing to investigate short-term rentals. That I'll turn it over to Eric.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Eric Otzelberger, Operations Manager. And Dave's too kind, a couple of years ago, you know, we drew straws out of a bag, and I got the short ones. So, you know, short-term rentals is an issue that impacts multiple city departments. It's, it's, it's rather broad. So, you know, we, I wanted to assure you, we've had folks across the city that have been tuned in with this. And just wanted to, tonight, basically, present a, you know, this is the first formal policy discussion for city council in this city on this topic, period. So this is what was probably the start of a marathon, not a sprint. And as Dave referenced, our primary question for you this evening is, is a yay or nay on embarking on outreach and engagement with the community and stakeholders? So that's really the policy question for you this evening. Next slide. So tonight, we're just going to, we're, we'll, you know, keeping the dad joke spirit alive. We're going to be rather brief and then open it up for your discussion and questions. We'll give you a little sketch of the overall landscape nationally and locally on short-term rentals and talk a little bit about the work we did three years ago with some preliminary stakeholder outreach and engagement, just to try to take the temperature of, you know, what folks were thinking about this. Next slide. So over the last several years, or 10 years now, really, short-term rentals has been in quite a growth mode. It is a $119 billion industry worldwide right now. And Colorado is a hotspot. Of course, mountain communities, no different than it has been over the decades with vacation rentals, has been a huge issue there. But as we've seen over the last few years, the growth of SDRs in the front range, it's, it's, it's not just a vacation community issue. Next slide, please. So what's going on in the front range? So most of our neighbors have adopted regulations. They've legalized short-term rentals and created licensing programs. You see Arbada, Wheat Ridge, Thornton, Boulder, Northland, Denver, and Broomfield. Lakewood's been working on this for the last few years. Lakewood's been working on this for the last few years. They haven't actually adopted regulations yet. Across the board, I, I'm not going to say they're best practices, but there are common practices, if you will. And most of these jurisdictions have a lot of similarities. One of the big ones is a primary residency requirement. I'll talk about the exceptions. Arvada and Wheat Ridge are the exceptions, but first, I'm going to talk about similarities. Most of our neighbors have a primary residency requirement, which means you have to be the owner. And some have limitations on how many days you can rent per, per month. Broomfield has a twenty-day cap. And then, but Boulder has no cap. And, and some jurisdictions have a requirement that the owner must reside at that property a set number of years. So that's, that's one of the overall similarities. Revenues, pretty much all of our neighbors collect, whether it's lodging or accommodations tax, sales and use tax, and there's typically a licensing fee. Complaints by and large, complaints are handled in-house. A few have a twenty-four-seven hotline, but those hotlines are then routed to staff, you know, whether it's property standards issues for code enforcement or police regulation issues. Occupancy limits. See similarity with occupancy limitation, the, the most common approach is a set number of individuals per bedroom. And that number is typically two individuals per bedroom. And then parking, different approaches with parking. Some jurisdictions require a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. But that just gives you, you know, we're not taking a deep, deep dive this evening, but just some of the, you know, at, at that higher level sketch with the approach. Now, I mentioned Arvada and Wheat Ridge, a little bit different. Arvada, you can have up to three short-term rental properties. However, as, as, as an operations individual and administrator, this, this, this gives me nightmares thinking of administering this, only one of the properties can be rented at any one time. There's a cap of two hundred forty days per year holistically. There, there are layers to Arvada's approach. And, and we love our neighbor, but when I think through operational realities, I have some concerns with that. Wheat Ridge is a little different. They, you can have two properties. One, you don't have to have residency, but the other you do. So, so sort of a hybrid approach there, where you would have to be renting out a, a room or part of your property on one, but you could have a, a second property that you don't live in. And, and I think holistically, looking at our neighbors, the, the desire is to protect integrity of neighborhoods, protect against the pseudo-hotels, and protect against investors speculating. And, and you just heard a lot about, you know, that's, 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 I think, you know, in our gut, what we all know, you know, it's kind of shocking here that we're in the country for housing prices. STRs are, they're, they're not the driver, but, but they're in the mix. Next slide, please.
Can I just ask a question about the residency piece? So some have how many days they have to live if they only have one house, that they have to live within the house. So if you were a snowbird, you could go wherever you're going and you could rent the house, but you're coming back to it.
Correct, correct. And, and the city, county of Denver, years ago, they, they were out front, at least locally here, and they had a hun, well, and still have a hundred eighty-day requirement. And so, yes, mayor, that, that sort of situation would, would, that would be legit.
Because the, some of the other ways, I would almost see some neighborhoods could be bought up and become just Airbnb.
Yeah, the, 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 once again, you know, while, while there maybe isn't the best practice, but as far as trying to strike that balance, it seems like that, that primary residency requirement is, is a big driver that many, many of our neighbors and, and many cities across the country have taken that approach. So I have a little data locally here from this, this data is from three years ago. There was a firm, actually, when I was working up in Eagle County, had, had done some work with called Host Compliance. And we brought them in to do just a high-level cursory review, understanding that short-term rental activity was happening in the city. And, and what you see here, they, they hit on two hundred thirty-two unique STR listings in the city. This was very high-level, there wasn't any data scrubbing, even though they, I think there were some duplications because there, there are over one hundred platforms out there. Airbnb, of course, has the largest market share with about eighty percent of the market share. Expedia, who owns Verbo and HomeAway, that's the second biggest slice. But you have Evolve locally, there, there are a lot of platforms. So I, I wouldn't take this data to the bank, but this was, was kind of a good, just cursory review of what was going on at that time. And you see a relatively low nightly rate there of seventy-one dollars. The reason for that is that of these, these properties, about half were just rooms. And at the time, Host Compliance, they were contracting with about two hundred jurisdictions across the United States and Canada. And they said that our percentage, which was roughly about fifty percent of, of rooms, was the highest that they've seen. Where, doing a lot of work in, in the, you know, vacation-type communities, you can understand, okay, it's typically all units or, or houses. So, so that was, that was a few years ago, but literally hot off the press. Next slide, please. We have some updated data. So we're under contract with the firm that's been doing short-term rental compliance monitoring out of Durango. They're, they, they used to be called Lodging Revs, a company out of Austin called GovOS has, has acquired them. A lot of our neighbors, a lot of jurisdictions in Colorado work with them because they're, they're, they're stateside and know Colorado. So we've, we've hit on two hundred twenty-one properties that are currently, we, we believe are likely currently operating as short-term rentals in the city right now. We're in the process of scrubbing through that data. We have about a hundred sixty-nine that are verified. The average daily rate, quite a bit different than the number I showed you a couple of years ago, a hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-three cents. You see the breakdown of type here. Thirty-eight percent are, are rooms, thirty percent apartments condos, eighteen percent homes, and fourteen percent, we don't exactly know yet. So it, you know, getting back to that, a couple of years ago, it was sort of a fifty-fifty between rooms and homes. You see kind of sim, kind of similar split here a couple of years later. And kind of interesting, it's important to remember that STRs are, are fluid in nature. We, we have a city employee that, when, when, when her family leaves on a vacation, they put their, they live in Boulder, not in the city of Westminster, but they, they put their property up. And they sort of rented out Airbnb and that offsets the cost of their vacation. But that's the only time they do it. So it's not like their property is listed year-round. So listings kind of, it's, it's, it's somewhat elastic. And, and in February, just in February alone, there were thirty-one new listings in the city. But, you know, those, those might stay, those might come and go. So, so it's important for us, we, we have not, and that's why we're under contract with these folks, to try to establish a better baseline of, over time, how does the, the number of properties and activity really track? Because we, we don't really know. All we have are these two snapshots, the one from three years ago and the, and the one that I'm literally from, from yesterday.
So you kind of covered it. I was raising my hand. So we don't know how long or how many days are, you know, that these are available.
We, we, we don't, but we will. And that's, and that's where, in, in the spirit of trying to better understand what's going on here, all, all we're doing right now with, with Lodging Revs and GovOS is just monitoring. So with their algorithms and with the system that they have, we'll be able to capture data over, over time. And, and, and for individual properties, get, get very specific, which if, if anyone's had experience with short-term rentals, you know, that, you know, whether it's Airbnb and Verbo, you know, you don't have the exact, when you're, when you're a user, the exact location to begin with, and there's, there's a little bit of concealment of some information. We can drill down and, and, and that's where, depending where the city decides to go with this. And that's where, with this being a journey, I think we will have a lot better data as, as we go down the road here. Because, because we'll, we'll be able, now that we have them going, you know, we've done this initial census, now we'll be able to keep up on it.
Do we have information on the revenue, on the fees and taxes from these cities of what they're seeing?
Not, not specific collections. There is a Westminster resident that happens to be the code officer that runs point for the city of Boulder and have spent some significant time with her, and she's presented, presented some good insights for us. When you start, now Boulder has three thousand properties. I'm, I'm not sure in their room bookings, but when you start applying accommodations tax, sales and use tax, it, it can, you know, translate, it's, it's certainly offsetting costs of administering, you know, the, the, these sorts of activities. We don't have specific numbers. We could certainly, you know, dig into that with our neighbors and, and get some.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, next slide, please. So in twenty nineteen, in full qualification, this, this wasn't a scientific survey, this was more of just a, hey, let's, let's try to take a little bit of polls. We, we did, we did some outreach with our, our HOAs and neighborhood associations, put things out through all the various city communication channels, and, and asked some basic questions around short-term rentals. And, and the, the two high-level questions we share with you this evening, once again, this was three years ago. This question, should the city regulate short-term rentals? Are, out of close to six hundred fifty responses, we, we, we had fifty-two percent that suggested to regulate, thirty-nine percent that said do not, and nine percent neutral. And then there was the opportunity for written, written responses. And, and for those that said regulate, there was a, an overarching theme of, hey, for, for all involved around short-term rentals, to clarify rules and expectations for all engaged parties, that, that, you know, whether it's neighborhoods, neighbors, individual property owners, probably advisable. On, on the do not regulate, it was, it was split, I'd say, two major themes. One, the city shouldn't butt in and just, should just stay out of it. And the second was, hey, the city shouldn't allow it. So that, councilor?
How did you, and I apologize if you said and I missed it, how did you get the people who filled out the survey? How was it distributed?
So, so we solicited, we sent direct communication to all HOAs and neighborhood associations in the city. And then we put things out at the time through the weekly, through City Edition, through some of our economic development channels. So it was, it wasn't, once again, it wasn't a scientific survey, but we used all, at the time, all of our communication channels to say, hey, fill out this quick, quick survey. So it, it was a, you know, folks that, you know, once again, try and get things out through, through our channels and established organizations out there. But, but yeah, it wasn't, once again, wasn't scientific.
And I just asked because I know I've, wouldn't say I've got a large amount, but the complaints I have got have been outside of HOA areas. I've heard complaints in historic part of town. I'm trying to think where the other one was, but I know it was Observatory Heights. I know I've seen a fair amount of them in the countryside area, just walking around because you can tell lock boxes, empty houses. So just was curious about that because I did get some of those complaints. But I will say that a lot of the complaints weren't necessarily around them being there. It was more that there wasn't any kind of oversight about how many people were there, people coming and throwing parties, you know, so it wasn't like the norm of the operating. But those were the kind of complaints that, that I've heard in the past. And I know I've passed those along to staff, we've kind of been developing some of those conversations, so.
And, and Mayor Protem and Council, I think it's important to know that what, what we've been doing is we have been enforcing impact issues. So if there have been property standards issues, our code enforcement team's been working on that. If there are, you know, disturbing the peace items like that, you know, that are with police regulations, police have been responding to those sorts of situations. But what, what's been tricky is, you know, not having regulations and not really knowing policy intent, you know, the use itself. And I know with a lot of, we've, we've, over the last three years, we've logged close to three hundred fifty distinct engagements with different stakeholders or interested parties. And that could be folks that are concerned about STRs operating in the city, or folks that are doing it, want to do it, want to know the rules. And, and so, yeah, once, once again, you know, we, we, both different than any other of our forty-five thousand, you know, property units in the city. If there are impact issues, we've been working those, but, but the use itself, you know, we haven't been enforcing that zone.
Yeah, and so one of my curiosities around this, as you investigated this, I've used a couple of these in the past vacation, you know, big family, it's sometimes a lot cheaper to do. But with that being said, a lot of these you go through, like VRPO and those kind of organizations. So do we know if any of our neighbors have had any, like, just like a complaint, like, say, a criminal complaint? Does that then reflect on the, the person who rented the property? Like, for example, I think like Uber drivers even can rate like bad customers, right? Like you can put, put a blemish on them. So is there something like that in the STR where, you know, maybe they aren't allowed to rent properties from one of these agencies that people use in order to market their properties?
So Mayor Protem, that, that, that's a great question. And as, as this is a common challenge across the United States and the world, so being the big two, well, Expedia with, with Verbo and Airbnb, they're starting what's called the Community Integrity Program. And basically, it's an inch, it's a data-sharing approach between both of those. It's these four, four renters and property owners, so that the bad egg operators or renters can sort of, you know, the, the private sector can help the public sector to, to enforce and, and regulate around those. So that, that's, that's something that hasn't fully borne fruit yet, but that is something that's underway. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Baker?
Yeah, according to the literature, right now, these are not allowed, correct?
Zoning is permissive by nature. So unless it's explicitly stated in the code as a use, it's not allowed.
So it's not allowed?
Correct.
Except we do have short-term rentals and they're called hotels and motels, right? We've got quite a few of them, don't we?
We, we do.
Next, we rarely enforce occupancy limits on our, on our neighbors, do we? Because I've actually had some complaints and the city wouldn't do anything about it. Absolutely refused to do anything about it. They were way over the occupancy for the house.
So, so we do, as, as you and other counselors may know, we do have an item in our code under special regulations where no more than four unrelated adults can live in a unit. Under close coordination with the city's lead prosecutor, there are some significant federal law items to, to, to consider, you know, around what we have in our city code. And, and I don't want to get across the line into legal advice, but, but let's just say there's some prosecutorial challenges that are quite significant around actually prosecuting certain zoning infractions in the city.
So let me ask the question a different way. Have we basically prosecuted any cases where they really violated the occupancy?
No.
In the last two years?
No.
Thank you. That's a, that's a nice answer I can get my hands on. So is the estimated number of these two hundred and thirty-two, or do you think that's a low-ball number because no one's really keeping track?
No, I, I, I think that's, my, my gut was telling me around two hundred and now, but actually putting some science and some fancy computer algorithms to assist with this. I, I think, you know, like, like I mentioned, we've literally, you know, working with this consultant, we've cleared a hundred sixty-nine or corroborated that these exist and we, we sincerely believe they are operating as short-term rentals. And, and as I mentioned, we still have to try to figure out over time, okay, how, how often, how many room nights, things of that nature. But I think, you know, to, to try to put it into perspective, we have forty-five thousand residential units in this city. So that, that's, that's everything, from single-family homes to, to apartments, town homes. So let's say it's, it's two hundred. So, you know, if we're close to point four, point five percent of the city's housing stock is being used as short-term rentals. So it's, it's a small magnitude, but it's So it's a small magnitude, but it's, and over time, you know, this is something the council wants to go on this journey with. We'll come back once we clean this data to show geographical distribution. Because what we're seeing now, they're distributed across the city. It's, you know, so we're, but we're still in that learning education phase, you know, to try to really dig into specifics on these.
And we've had 350 complaints and contacts for these 200-odd units over the last three years, you said?
Over the, so it's, and that 350 number, Counselor Baker, includes, I'd say it's about 75%, 25%, 75% inquiries on how do I do this, or do I need a license, or things like that. 25% of those contacts are complaints. So we've certainly had complaints.
So we've had about 90 complaints from the 200 units over three years.
Roughly, yeah.
Do these give any safeguards to the people who have to rent these? Like if you go to a hotel, a hotel has to give you safeguards. They have a legal obligation to give you safeguards. They're, I mean, they're sort of like a pharmacy selling legal drugs, where these guys are sort of like a dealer, selling illegal drugs. And if he sells you betanol by mistake instead of cocaine.
Good question. So three years ago, our chief building official and I discussed this issue. And once again, we're initially, you know, we just want to figure out what would we do if we were in this situation tomorrow, told us, you know, we need to regulate these. We would recommend an initial safety inspection, no different than we do with our long-term rental housing, you know, just to look at life safety items. Now, other jurisdictions, some do that inspection, many do an affidavit to say, hey, you have a carbon monoxide detector, basically you have all these life safety inspections. But a lot of our neighbors aren't doing that safety inspection. We would recommend that we do that. If down the road, the city gets into a regulation and licensing situation.
I was thinking more like immediate safeguards. Really what, for like, I mean, the safety of a person? And is there some obligation on the part of the host to ensure the person's safety and not robbed in the middle of the night or something like that?
More like violent or property crime versus like the built environment? You know, everything I've seen has been around the actual structure and the use of the structure. As far as safety and someone to contact, a lot of cities have what's called like a good neighbor approach where there's a lot, no different than at a hotel where you've got the, oh, here's all your information, you know, key emergency contacts. And many jurisdictions require, well, many require a primary residency requirement, but you have to have a local contact that, if, let's say, you are a snowbird and you're somewhere else, that can respond 24/7 within one hour if there's an issue. But otherwise, it's going to be a public safety call, no different than any other property in the city.
Okay. And do any of these regs put a burden on the host to ensure the safety? Like hotels have that burden. That's why some have security guards and patrolled parking lots and everything else.
There are some that have kind of a three-strikes-and-you're-out approach with your license, where, let's say, if there's significant things that go poorly at the property, then an operator can be at risk of having their license revoked.
And of course, the whole dynamic is tremendously different if you just rent a room in an occupied house by the owner versus, here's the keys.
Correct. And that's where, I mean, New York City is one, but many, many popular, larger cities that have had concerns around short-term rentals, while there haven't been flat-out prohibitions, there have been prohibitions against entire units. And New York and Jersey City are two that come top of mind, where you can rent out a room or part of your unit, but you can't rent out the entire unit.
Someone else can have one. Swing.
267.
So in the analysis that you're going to be doing, is there some way to determine what level of impact to our housing supply or to our vacancies or, you know, because I can imagine that somebody is doing this like full-time with their home, it's kind of essentially taking that off the market for a living unit. So is, in terms of understanding, is it enough to trigger us, you know, putting the effort into regulating this? Or, you know, like you can monitor it and sort of measure certain elements, certain statistics, and then get to?
That's, yeah, I think we'll find out more. I'll say this, and this is just based on having a few years in mountain experience, we're certainly not in the same, I'll say, I'll say, crisis sort of situation, but, I mean, it's been challenging for a long time as far as livability and housing costs in the mountains. You know, Crested Butte, for instance, has a 30% cap. So some jurisdictions, I didn't mention this, place a cap on the number of short-term, you know, so maybe to that, you know, if in the analysis we find that it is having some sort of impact on affordability or availability, Wheat Ridge put a 2% cap. So they have wards and districts and basically their ordinance says that you can't have any more than 2% of the number of residential units in each district as a short-term rental. Now, that would be a lot for the city of Wheat Ridge. I mean, I don't think they're anywhere close to that, but in mountain communities, it becomes a little more real. 40% of the properties in Vail are short-term rentals. You know, Buena Vista is looking at putting a 7% cap because they're feeling a lot of pressure right now. So I think we'll learn more, and I think there are some defensible mechanisms to put some limitations as we go down the road.
Do you have anything else to share with?
Just last slide, or think, well, it's close to the last slide. Next slide, please. So we had regulate, and then the slide after this one is, we asked about prohibiting short-term rentals. And that one was a little more clear as far as responses. We had a response of 67% said do not prohibit short-term rentals, 22% said prohibit, and 11% were neutral. So this wasn't as split as the regulation question. But once again, not scientific, just sort of temperature-taking with a lot of our, you know, regular communication avenues and known organized communities out there. The last slide is basically just a question slide. And once again, the key policy question is, should we engage? Should we engage with stakeholders in the community in formal efforts to explore this regulation? And to look at our neighbors, it's, for all of them, it's a journey. The city of Arbada, they had, their city council had five study sessions, such as this, along their journey before draft regulations were ever presented in city council. Wheat Ridge was added for years. The city of Lakewood has been added for years and they're still at it. So once again, I think this is more of a marathon versus a sprint issue. But, you know, there are some strong feelings around this issue and just want to, you know, get your direction before we really start, you know, to see, do we embark on that larger public touch?
And by doing nothing, the ones that are doing what they're doing currently are just doing it with no regulation.
There, once, you know, with our property standards, with police regulations, you know, there are other safeguards in place as far as impacts. But if we cut down to the zoning question, where technically, they're not allowed, they're operating, but we have some prosecutorial challenges if we were to go down the road of issuing municipal summonses to try to prosecute zoning use. So in the absence of clear policy direction, it's a little tricky place on the zoning.
And just a heads up, because I don't read next door often because there's very rarely positive things in there or same thinking. But notice that next street over, they're asking people to come because there are over five different households living in one household in a rental. So heads up. March 14th meeting. Mayor Protam?
I'm curious if you move forward. And this is really around the fact that I want to make sure that we get the input from areas that aren't HOAs, because we have very large communities that aren't HOA. How do you, you know, what are some ideas around making sure that we're getting feedback from the entire city, understanding that it affects the entire city?
Good. What we would do is we would partner with our ICD team and our communication and outreach coordinator that helps support us in CD. You know, we've already talked about some concepts, but we would really leverage his talents and abilities to get out there. And we would, we would start, you know, there are different schools of thought, but I think focus groups are very effective. And we already have, you know, over the last three years, close to 350 people that said, hey, if this is something city council takes on and there's the opportunity for input engagement, you know, we want a chance for that. As you all know, larger meetings, things can get a little unwieldy, voices can get drowned out. So we want to make sure, and that's where the marathon versus the sprint, that we really do due diligence around the engagement and outreach, you know, because we're going to have to gather data for a while with this monitoring. So we feel we can get out there systematically and holistically for anyone that wants to participate, because it is a good distinction, I think, as everyone knows, on short-term rentals, no different than any other issue. HOAs with their covenants have a different layer than non-HOA areas have. So the city regulations are it when it comes to those non-HOA areas. So we want to make sure their voices are heard in this.
Yeah. And that makes sense. I guess my other thought, because I am in favor of us looking at something, and I would like to see us get something sooner rather than later, understanding we have some pretty big developments in the near future. And I'm curious about like other municipalities who have had large amounts of building going on, if owner occupied, if they're seeing like investment groups or whatever buy up, because that would be a concern I would have, while maintaining some sort of property rights. Because I, you know, I'm a big proponent of property rights. However, you know, what we're trying to, as a city, balance out owner occupied versus what's rental, I see that there's some risk here. I even think about the downtown and, you know, there's a limited amount of owner occupied. And so if somebody started buying up the townhomes or condos when they come along, I think that would be a negative effect on what we're trying to accomplish.
Counselor Zadi?
What percentage of, do we have ownership information of the percentage of Westminster residents who own short-term rentals in Westminster?
As far as, with those STRs that we're identifying, how many are owners versus renters that might be?
Yeah, how many of the owners live in Westminster?
Oh, live in Westminster? We don't have that data yet. You know, with the property identification, what we would do pending direction is directly engage with those folks as stakeholders. And, I mean, through assessors' records, and, you know, we would, you know, and it's just going to be going one property at a time, but verifying, you know, we have ownership, but we need to verify the ownership. My sense is a vast majority. I don't think, you know, we've had a lot of speculators, investors coming in, you know, but hence why, you know, the recommendation of maybe looking at this now just to sort of, you know, mitigate with that potential risk out there.
Yeah, I'm in favor of regulation on this. I'm just thinking holistically, if there are residents that are going to be impacted by this regulation during a time when people are still recovering economically, I'm just curious what that, what those numbers look like.
Well, Counselor Zadi, and to your concern, I'll share this, more of an anecdote, but have had many, or quite a few conversations with individuals that are operating STRs with rooms to help them pay the mortgage. And even seeing the most conservative jurisdictions, you know, their regulations approach to STRs, you know, where they don't allow the whole unit, but that room rental, because it's, especially with the cost of housing, it's one of those ingredients that certain people that are on-premise, that are living there are using that to help make ends meet, to make the mortgage.
Also a follow-up question. When you're done with the community outreach and that process, what's the next step after that? So would that be a deeper dive on the financial impact of what regulation could have for us? And those sorts of things?
And Larry Dorr and I have already coordinated on some of the financial pieces along with our sales tax manager. Yeah, we, you know, pending direction this evening, we would put together a schedule, you know, kind of looking at all elements of this, the outreach engagement, financial analysis, the corroboration, and more coming back to you in a work session like this with more data about the properties that are out there. And, you know, I think the way Arbada went about it was pretty good because there are a lot of elements to this. And bring it in chunks along the way would probably be what we would be recommending.
Are you thinking several months? How roughly, when will we hear back from you, summer or?
I think pending direction, I mean, we're, summer would probably be good because it would give us a little more time to, you know, get some trend data and start that outreach. Like, you know, from start to finish, Arbada's process, and not to say it's all things Arbada, but it was about a year and a half process. I think, I mean, we can, I mean, we can move as quickly as you'd like, but as far as like really, if we're really digging in on the outreach and engagement, maybe tracking in a year.
Counselor Emmons?
Some of the questions I have have been answered, but I need a little bit more depth into the answer. And maybe this is forthcoming in a next study session a year from now or so. But some of the key differences between, can you outline them between, let's say, like a one-year rental versus a 30-day rental? Obviously, the time is a key difference, but what would be different from me renting out my house for a year versus 30 days?
Probably not that much as far as the rental property maintenance code. I mean, the good thing is that the city, I mean, like many other cities already have the basic life safety. You know, a difference, though, is the accommodations tax, sales and use tax, you know, the revenue side of it, because instead of that longer-term housing, you know, it is more of an accommodations type of use. So it's, so revenue would be different.
Maybe I could add to that, Eric, if I could. Yeah, any, if you rent out a room in your home or the entire home on a long-term rental, our Westminster municipal code sets a very bright line at 30 days.
Yeah.
So if you have a 31-day rental, a 90-day rental, a one-year renter, maybe even month-to-month, but they're occupying for more than 30 days, there's no sales tax that's due on that rental, there's no lodger's tax that's due. But where we allow zoning for lodging establishments, if you stay 29 nights or one night, that constitutes a lodging establishment in those zoned areas of our city. And then sales tax is due and accommodations tax is due. So that's connect, that's based on the use that's happening, whether it's allowed or not, then those taxes are due. That's the bright line in our Westminster code.
Okay. And then zoning, I mean, you kind of got around to that, that answer with Counselor Baker, but what would that look like? I mean, if this, if we did, I would presume if we made an ordinance around it, we would need to change some kind of zoning to help define, or is that within?
Well, that's a good question. And I didn't mention, Counselor Emmons, there are some jurisdictions that do district-based zoning for short-term rentals. New Orleans is one that comes to mind. You can't do an STR in the French Quarter or the Garden District.
To more destination places.
So, you know, but most, most, vast majority of other jurisdictions out there, it's sort of a overarching approach of either STRs being allowed in all residential districts. You know, so, yeah, there, but there is, there is some precedent out there of, you know, a district-based approach, but that's the small minority, I think, of other jurisdictions out there. But, but that, that's the, the small minority, I think, of, of other jurisdictions out there.
Okay. And then you mentioned you're taking time to get the temperature. At what point do we feel it's too hot and that we need to have some kind of parameters that we need to? I, I mean, obviously you're thinking about it now, but what, at what point does it become? An actual item that you bring before council to make a policy on?
Well, a- and that's where I think we, we would work with leadership to put, you know, we, we wouldn't wait a year to return to you. I, I, I think, you know, kind of smaller bites, you know, we could, we could kind of chart our course, come back and, and, and have that. Hey, are we on the right path? Do we, do we need to pull back a little bit? Do we need to accelerate? You know, just, just have, have a few touch points. I mean, understanding that you're all handling a lot of competing priorities, a lot of very important issues. You know, I, I, I think it benefits us that we're, we're certainly not bleeding edge on this. And, and, and there is, you know, some strength to regionalism and, and not saying that we have to follow what our neighbors have done. But at, at least it gives some framework to this. So I, I, I think, you know, we would, um, we would probably err on the side of, you know, even if it's info-only S A F reports. Just, just updating you along the journey and just making sure we're, we're on course.
Okay. Some of the missing pieces for me that I would like to see in a next discussion. Because there seems to be a lot of touchpoints that we need to consider, right? Either licensing or I think you listed them out in the, the council report. I mean, even here, like primary residence, whether you own it, primary residence, whether you live there. Time limit cap, uh, if we have that, the parking. So I would like to see a, a, kind of a spreadsheet indicator as far as here are the options, right? And here is kind of what we could work around, um, within those parameters. Obviously, staff would present the, the most suitable for our city and what works for us. But I would also like to understand how this. How this might affect surrounding owners. Um, and even maybe go so far as to talk with realtors and our banking and our insurance. Because I know that, uh, when I purchased my first home, I know loans can have an indicator on, um, the value of the property, right? And so I, I don't want to incidentally, but I'm also principled in property rights, but I don't want to incidentally. Devalue the property rights of others, um, in, in that regard. So I want to better understand how a short-term rental might affect that surrounding ownership within the neighborhood. So, um, some of those missing pieces, uh, would help me better understand to make a holistic policy.
And, and, and that's where I think, you know, through a, a, a focus group approach and with, with stakeholders. Because I have had several discussions with those in the real estate industry, insurance industry. You know, the, the goal would be to bring you. All, all of the involved stakeholders and sort of just practical, you know, recommendations or considerations. So, so as you're going through the policymaking process, because like you said, and Barbara knows I love a good spreadsheet. So we'll, we'll, we'll put together all, all of that. But, uh, you know, we're, we, I mean, we stand ready, you know, we're, we're here to implement your policy and, and, and we'll give you our best recommendations. But, but there's, there's a, there's a lot to this, a, a lot of, a lot of different policy touchpoints to, to the overarching issue.
So are you, uh, go forward at least to the next step?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Counselor Baker.
Yeah, I'd like to give them a little more, uh, tightly drawn guide rails. Onto what they're looking at. I think renting a room in an occupied home, whether it's the owner or the renter. I think that we can, I think I could find a place for that in my city. I, I can't find a place in my city for people to rent entire homes out for party homes or whatever. This is a very small fraction. There's really hardly any money for the city to make on this. I mean, if you had two hundred homes and they rented them out fifty nights a year and we charged twenty bucks apiece, was that a couple hundred thousand bucks? And just in the manpower alone, it's going to be at least a person at a hundred thousand bucks. I think there is value in defining. Right now, well, yeah, it's illegal, but we're not enforcing that. I think we owe it to everybody to define it. And I think by allowing a rental in a room of an occupied home, not only does it give protections to the consumer who's buying that night. But it really places the control of that rental right in the hands of the people who are the primary occupants of that. And then we don't have to worry about things like how do we enforce occupancy, which we can enforce and so many stuff like that. So, uh, talk to other people on the council, but I'd like to say renting in a room, we can make regulations for that. And then specifically say any other kind of short-term rental, nope. Thirty days is our rule right now, right?
I'm fine with thirty days.
Yeah, for him?
I wouldn't agree with totally doing a prohibition on a whole home. I feel like the, the feedback you already got was that that's not what people want to see. But I certainly am still in favor of moving forward and looking at some, some rails around it.
Uh, Counselor Nammell.
I will echo Mayor Protem. I, I feel like it's worthwhile to move forward, get the information, just, um, and, you know, chart a course from there. But I, yeah, I could still see us allowing a limited, limited amount.
You have six for moving forward as you presented and one that would like to define it to just only the renter with the homeowner. Which we may get to once you do everything, but that's somewhere else down the road. So you have a clear direction to keep moving forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Can I run and get a Coke?
Yeah.
Okay, good. If you leave, the meeting kind of stops.
All right, can you hear me now? Now I can't hear you at all. There it is.
Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you now.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Brian.
How much does it cost to get Tom Burdette back in Hotel 6?
Yeah. What do you have to do? Can you hear me now?
Will you walk around a little bit?
A little bit. I might walk.
Okay, we're back and we move, if you weren't here at the very beginning of the meeting, we move this to number three and we'll deal with the budget last, so go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem and councilors. The policy and budget staff is here this evening, Chris Lindsay, John Krasner, myself. We're here to talk with you about the community survey. So we also have Ryan Murray from EPC Institute, City's consultant on this, on the line with us as well. So for background, just a reminder that staff came before you on January 10th to do a presentation on the survey and take feedback from all of you regarding the survey. We have implemented the feedback that you gave to us and included some specific detail in the staff report for your reference. And we also included revisions and updates based on all of your work with the new strategic plan. So that's been folded into the survey as well. And that's what brings us back here now that we've had the strategic plan to include in that. So we hope the survey reflects, as reflected in your packet, meets your expectations. But certainly we are here to both seek your approval and certainly field any questions that you might have as well, so that we can go ahead and finalize this and then proceed with conducting the survey. So we're really just here to answer any questions and again, hopefully get your approval or direction. Okay. I have some just comments on some of the questions. I don't have it in front of me, but I have my notes on it, so.
On question 12.
Okay. I can't remember what exactly it is, maybe identifying issues.
Perception of safety and security, please rate how safe you feel in the following situations.
Okay. Oh, I was just gonna say, number three, this is super small. But number three says in the downtown, if applicable, it sounds like this might have been just some boilerplate language and we could probably remove if applicable.
Yes.
Thank you. And then. Question, is it okay, just go through my questions?
Sure.
All right, question 19. It would be good to know, this is regarding recycling sites. And it's kind of slightly vague, so it would be good to know if people want more recycling sites? I have heard that. So if we can add that to it. And then I will throw this out there, it'd be lovely to, with a scientific survey, be able to ask people about whether they want to have recycling service or composting be available to them.
What do you mean by that? It's a very vague thing when you say available to them. Do you mean at their curbside, you mean in their neighborhood?
Oh, curbside. I would love to know if people would.
Would we act on it?
We tried to act on it years ago.
Well, we're not going to that.
I know, but with the scientific survey, it would be helpful, because all we have was about 200 people.
Well, we're only gonna have 700 people here.
I'm just saying, it would be, you know, it's just.
You never had those 200 people, I'm not saying those other 200 people were.
I was there.
She was on the lobby.
I was. Okay, throwing this out there, you guys can squash it all you want, all right. Okay, so, and then there's a question about, I think this is on 19 too, sorry, about how the city manages and ensures a rich and resilient environment, which is. So I forgot my iPad.
Number 21.
21, subsection six, or sub-question six. The city of Westminster provides a resilient environment. Who's gonna get that? I mean, I think if we could elaborate just a little bit, because I know it's like a big picture goal that we've stated, but if nothing else, just talk about, does the city, I don't know, manage, do we manage the city in a way that ensures a resilient environment? Or, you know, maybe it's broken into two. I just, I feel like it just, yeah, people might kind of question what the heck we mean by that. On number 22, you know, we have stated with our strategic plan effort, these elements, it would be interesting to know, and maybe it's an open question, but have we missed anything? Is there anything important missing to them? So this is the one where we're laying out the five.
What about question number 30? So that's an open-ended question that allows for open-ended feedback there, does that kind of look what?
But then they forget it.
I mean, you could just, it is a long.
It's very long. That's too long.
Yeah, it is, it's like a really long. I mean, people should get donuts for doing it. It's incentives.
Tomato, tomato.
Same, same.
Okay, so that, to the point of, I could pair it with the question, because I think if we want to be pointed and asking, did we miss anything? Then I would pair it there.
I was putting it under 30, but which is, what do you think is the single most important thing the city of Westminster could do to improve quality of life for its community members? Anything else we should know? I just feel, or just have a question that says, tell us what you think. I don't even think it needs to be leading, like I just think it needs to just say.
That's my concern about moving it, is then it's leading to one area.
I just don't think that we have a question that says, tell us your thoughts.
What would you like us to hear?
Yeah, because this is a single most important thing, yeah. Okay, I mean, I'm open. And then I think number 23 is is a shot at being, addressing growth, but it's not providing adequate context. So for example, talking about residential growth in Westminster, are we talking about certain types of housing opportunities? Are we talking about density, are we talking about single family? I just feel like it's a loaded, unhelpful question. Commercial growth in Westminster, are we talking about employment? Are we talking about retail? If you're gonna ask questions about growth, it should be broken down and clarified. And this density piece, it is too broad. Again, what is it, it's just density. And there's places for density and there's places for no density. Or, you know, I just, again, it's just. What are we trying to get out of that?
Well, but even paired with the question, you think that? I mean, I look at that and I think, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, think about this, in downtown, density is great because it makes for a lot of people and it's active and vibrant and the overall quality of that, of life in that area, if you like living in that, is great. But would a single fam, would single-family housing help that area? Like right in the downtown area? So the.
It depends on, I guess, your point of view, because some people don't want the density, some do. Some people, they think it belongs there.
That's exactly it. That's exactly it. I mean, there's, there's, there's this range and I just feel like it's not. I don't know, density in your, what I was thinking of was like density in your neighborhood, density next to your neighborhood, or.
Even if the downtown, there's a density count.
Yeah, like density, maybe it's by geography, or maybe it's just as simple as saying density near your neighborhood or in your commercial areas or kind of back to your.
I can see what you're saying. I mean, if I read it, I'm thinking, which of these is positive versus negative on the city? That's the way I'm reading it phrase, but I suppose it doesn't hurt to give some examples of what that is. But I don't know, I read it that it's, how do these three different topics? Are these good or bad for you in your mind? Do you want density, do you want residential growth? Do you not want them? Am I reading that kind of what was intended in the question?
Yeah, with a range of positive, positive to negative.
Yeah, it kind of looks like a zero sum. I think you either, you know, you don't, you don't give room for calibrating it in the city, in actual planning. It's just like yes or no overall, and that's not how you plan. It's not how you plan a city. So that's, that's common, I mean, I would suggest taking another stab at it and/or figuring out, do you break down the density question, you break down the resident, or just clarify residential and commercial growth, what you mean by that? That's that question. And finally, 25-13. We talk about availability of trails or trail connections, but one thing that I've heard folks talk about is just not having access to park spaces. And that's a little bit different to me than recreation facilities. And so I don't know if it's like an extra line, I hate to make this longer, but, or just combine it with trail connection.
I actually like the question the way it is, 23. I don't have a ton of feedback, honestly, because I do think it's really long. On 23, though, I do think it would be interesting to know, I don't know if 23 is the right place, but I, the concept of like, as we near build out of people would rather see adaptive reuse versus scraping and rebuild kind of things, like you've seen at the downtown. I think that there, there's more having something like that, if not now, maybe in the future. Well, especially as we near build out. One that I'm gonna harp on, because I've harped on it before, is 25, number one, that you don't have the different things actually broke out. And so just crime in general, I think, doesn't give us enough leeway to figure out which things we actually want to tackle. Like I know that we, as a council, have already said, we'd like to look at graffiti. But I think that, you know, having a better breakdown of the, at some level of of the different areas of that, of crime and safety, I think makes sense.
Well, for me, to go along with that one is, and with whatever one all the police is involved in, there's nothing about what the state legislature has done to us, nothing. And there's, I already know what some of these marks are gonna be, because nobody's thinking that, because no one is sharing and educating the public for what bills have gone down, what has been passed, and what our police force, why 60 people are gone.
But to that point, if you went out and asked the general public why crime has went up or why things are the way in the city, I doubt that they would understand or point blame at, at what actually is to blame. We've been hearing things like COVID's to blame for so long, or, you know, or in general, to your point, people don't understand the challenges that we actually have in law enforcement between homelessness, staffing levels, and what's affecting them and what's driving people from policing. So we need to better under, we need to better educate the public about it. But we also need to better understand where their mindset is, so that we can make sure that we're educating them. I don't know how to do that better, but I certainly don't think that that's broken down well enough in my mind.
Mayor Portem, at the end of page two, question number 12, there's a little bit more breakout, property crimes, violent crimes, residential. Does that get closer to what you're looking for?
It gets closer, but I mean, it's still, you're not, like, think about the things that we get the most complaints about as council people. I mean, granted, there's, you know, you get a handful every couple of weeks, depending on what's going on in the community. But I get a ton about homelessness and graffiti specifically. We get a ton about drug houses. I get a ton of complaints if I talk to community members in certain parts of the, of town that think that there, you know, there's drug activity in homes. And we saw it with this recent house that blew up, there was a lot of, and I don't know whether there's any truth to it, but there was a lot of assertions that that was a drug home. So it gets closer to it, but I mean, there's some specific things that we hear, hear about that we still even, even in 12, you have certain areas that are like auto theft. That's a subcategory. So I could, I would assume that number seven's gonna get probably a ton of marks, but you're not, you know, is it burglary, theft vandalism, auto theft? I mean, that's, in my mind, is too vague.
Yeah, and nobody understands, none of those people are gonna go to jail. And most people are doing that two to three times a day, going through our doors and going right back, back out the front door.
I mean, luckily, we're not, some of the other states have legalized shoplifting, but I mean, still, I like to understand better what, you know, what people's concerns are in those areas. So that gets closer to your point, but it's still not as broken down as I'd like to see it.
So if I could kind of try to repeat back, I think I heard, so you said homelessness, which is in 25-04, but graffiti and drugs in particular being broken out as separate questions?
And auto theft you have in there is one. I'm just trying to think of the big ones that we hear a lot about. And I'd like to know if, you know, when you're doing a statistic survey, you know, is that just because we're getting the emails about it? Or is this something that the general city is concerned about? Does that make sense? Gotcha.
Are we looking at specifically auto theft? Because I know a lot of break-ins, but not of like actual car theft.
That's what I'm saying, though, like I'd like to know the difference. Like you, in this, you have those things put together, you have theft and auto theft and vandalism all in one thing. And I feel like those three things we hear enough about that I'd like to hear which one rises to the top. I mean, you, obviously, I'm just one voice, so if there's not three other people who feel that way. And then I was just gonna say, I think it's fantastic that you have TikTok on here, so. I don't have anything else.
How do I follow that? Well, I just, if I may make a follow-up question, comment on that is, we know what the statistics are, I don't think we need to have it broken down into the specifics. Do you have an effect, you know? Is this, is crime in general affecting you? I mean, this is affect, we know the effect, we know the crime stats. I mean, we're trying to hear from them in general, how they feel, not get the statistics from them or try to explain anything to them.
Well, I agree, except for things like if you're lumping, is graffiti, like, is that impacting you? If we're gonna go after things as a, as a policy, we know that crime is, is out of hand. So I think that, you know, that's my, my point is, which things do we need to go after more? We have a limited amount of resources, limited amount of.
Sorry, you're just trying to identify what crime should be prioritized? Because all of that means something to someone, right? Like.
It's not a crime until it affects you.
So how do you? Are we looking at feedback, to your point, like are we looking at feedback that says, you know, 100 people said vandalism over two people at secret? And then we prioritize vandalism? Like, is that kind of what you're kind of thought?
Somewhat, I guess. I, I just think it would be, it would always wanted it more broken down, because I want to understand what, you know, what's concerning the residents. Because it's not necessarily that it's impacted you, it's, is this a concern for you? I've, I've heard the mayor before talking about how she has a neighbor, because, you know, I've heard the idea from the state now that we're gonna fix the crime problem by adding more streetlights. But she can tell you that in her neighborhood, somebody has had their car stolen under a streetlight.
Catalytic converter's been under the streetlight and a hit-and-run under the streetlight.
They have cameras on them, everywhere, and they don't care.
Well, and, and they haven't been caught.
So understanding specifically what things are concerning the residents allows us to do a couple of things. It allows us to focus on those things as a city, as far as what's in our control. It helps us lobby to our state legislators to say, these are things that are concerns inside of our community. And it helps us educate what's in our control and what's not, and what people should be calling their legislators about. So that's the reason I think it's important. Can I add there? I mean, I, I guess, to your point, Councilor Seymour, that is difficult, because how big of a list do you want? But I think there's some, some, there's some key ones I feel like we could hone in on more. And if you ask me, the top ones, those are kind of the areas. And yeah, I'm glad homelessness is separate, but certainly hear a lot about drug use, graffiti, and auto theft.
Just wanna back up Mayor Portem there. I, I agree that, but less so for those reasons, more so because when you ask people what's happening open-endedly, more, more so than, so maybe it's more of an open-ended. There are nuances to crime, to all kinds of crime, that we can't tell from the effects or the stats, right? Because, so I wouldn't see this as a prioritization of, of a way to prioritize which crime, but I would see it more as, they, they may let us, they, they may give us insights to what nuances exist that the data doesn't tell us, that can help us with the crime. So, so I think it's really important to break it out, because car thefts, I mean, I'm sure you all got the same, it's non-stop, all day, people. It's a huge issue and we need to understand what, what, what's happening past the data, right, past the effect. So that's why I would support that. And I might as well continue with my list. So I agree with everyone else, it's very long, it's probably too long. I would hope the drop-off rate, so if people start this and then they see it's 30 more minutes, they might just give up, yes?
Ryan, would you want to speak to the length of the survey?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Yes, so the length is always a concern. For me, it's really refreshing to have staff and council kind of reframing that as well. You know, seven-page surveys are successful. Response rates don't suffer tremendously. From what I saw in your past reports, and you have much historical data there, this won't be an issue. There might be some folks who, who drop off, but again, it shouldn't be a, a major issue with this length of survey. It's well broken out, while I do think it'll take you 20 minutes. There, there's a lot of solid topics in here, so I, I don't think it's a major issue.
Okay, so for number one, what I don't see is cost of living or the perceptions of the city. So there, we talk about quality of life, which is very generic to most people as to what that means. But I think adding a cost of living to someone's perception of the city is important. So when I think about that, I think of housing, utilities and food. That's probably something that could be in there. For number four, so quality of the city responsiveness is something that I don't see in there. We talk about quality. is something that I don't see in there. We talk about quality of services provided by the city, but I think responsiveness is what I hear more about and the lack thereof from residents. So I'd be interested to know how many residents believe that, that, that they're not getting a responsive, you know, a, a communication or timeliness, right? So some kind of ti- timeliness factor there for number four?
Counselor? Number seven discusses customer service. Just, I wanted you to take a look at those and see if there's any of those that hit that? Or if we should add something there in number seven?
Yes, with number seven. So I had that in here, 7.1 responsiveness is not in there.
Okay.
That's, that's probably the most important that I hear about. Number five? Should follow question three. So this number five is after number four, but it's referring to number three. I think that would confuse.
It was out of sequence.
Yeah, so we shifted up to be right after.
It, it's supposed to refer to question number four.
Oh, that's supposed to be four?
Because that's where he gives the choice.
Okay, because it's not, it's not numbered correctly.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
9.1. So it says current information as the number one. But I think relevancy or something like that of the information is more important. Current information could confuse some residents as to what that means. I know you mean, is it recent, right? So maybe just changing the word current or changing it on so it's relevant. Relevant information is more important than current information. So maybe that's two different ones you had, or just the, the term current information is not clear. 10.4?
These are in paper form.
Question on fire inspection programs. So we have fire, fire education programs, then fire inspection programs. What do we mean by that specifically?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I, I know that, I know that affects our businesses. They do active business inspections.
On the inspection?
Yeah.
Maybe just clarify what that is for folks when they read that?
Really not applicable to most, to most of the respondents.
Yeah. So if we're talking about businesses, then we should specify if you own the business or?
Just take it out.
Or, or take it out.
Do we have, though, the inspection programs in your community? Is there a home inspection program that the fire department will do? I know the police department will do one, and I know I've been out with the fire department where we actually went out and did replacements of fire, smoke, and CO2 detectors for people.
That's true.
So we'll verify, those departments reviewed these questions and didn't, they were comfortable with them. So I, let us check with the fire department on that one.
And my point there is if we're having questions, the residents will, will have a question for sure. Number 12. The title says perceptions of safety and security. And then it says to please rate how safe you feel for 1, 2, 3, 4. I think the term, it's not in easily understandable terms. So when we say perception of safety, I could see that being either taken the wrong way, meaning, don't you believe my reality is my reality, right? It's not my perception, it's how it is. Or, what do you mean by perception of safety and security? What I would suggest is something like, how safe and secure do you feel in? And then you list those things there. That's more layman's terms, so people can not have to digest what the question is trying to ask.
Or just remove perception of, and then it would just be a safety and security block. And then it says, please rate how safe you feel.
Yeah, that works. Let's take out the word. I agree. 12.3? I just wrote confusing in my notes. Let me see why I said that. Oh, the, so the, in the downtown, I think you brought this up. Yeah, taking that out would be good. 12.6? I said should be 12.1, so moving that up. So the overall feeling of safety in your community should be the first thing to answer. I think it covers, it kind of covers the rest of it. But that's the most important piece, so we should move it up to the top of that list. 12.9? Oh, and this is just probably a printing thing. I think you mentioned that it's, this is in different formats for folks. Or what's the, the main medium that they'll be receiving this in?
They'll get a paper survey and they can also complete it online.
And just if I may, I, I sent an updated, final, proofed, and formatted copy to Theresa. My team is rushing to make sure that was ready for later this week. And they sent it to me this evening, and all of that formatting and numbering has been cleaned up in that draft. We just didn't have time to present that this evening.
Okay, my note here is more tacky than anything, but from, from me, but it's just formatting, ma- making sure that the lines. So, on certain versions, I've seen this in, the line was dark for a sub item. To a lot of people, when they read that, that changes their psychology of what they're reading. So they may think it's a summary of the whole section, but just making sure that all the borderlines are the same thickness and even, so they don't have, that's just a little tacky thing for me. Sorry. Number 13. Where is location of city parks? We talk about maintenance, we talk about the number, but what we hear a lot about is the location. And I think Counselor Namela mentioned this some, in, in, in hers as well, that location is important. So how they feel about where parks are located is, to me, the most important, probably. Maybe, depending on your geography of the city. So we know South Westminster would like more parks and amenities, so that's something that would be good to add there. Number 15. And this one is more optional. I, I, I think snow removal is a safety issue, not a appearance issue. I don't think people care if their roads are not, care about the, the look and feel about the road if it's not plowed. I think they care because it is not safe. So I, I, I would move safe, the snow removal to a safety section. But that's, I'll ask council if they agree or not. It, it's not really about maintenance. Well, it's about maintenance, but it's not, but linking that with appearance is a little further away than the actual reason, which is safety. Then I said, uh, so D 13?
Can we go back real quick just because it's relevant to what you're saying? But it's maintenance and appearance, because I could say the same about a lot of the maintenance things, because I mean, maintenance goes into safety to some level. But I mean, I was trying to understand because it's not just appearance.
That's fair. That's why I said it was optional. It's not, it's, it's either, it's here nor there. So that's fair. On D 13? It says, many people don't have time to vote in elections. Did you vote in the 2021 city council election? I think the wording of that is really strange. It's, it's almost leading, right? So having that first sentence, it's leading them towards, I don't know. The question itself is strange. If they voted or not, I get the reasoning that maybe there's a correlation somewhere that you can map with data to these other things, but it's just a odd question to me.
That's my markup on that question.
So, yeah, it's very leading.
I, I brought this up two years ago, too, I think.
Yeah, and, and so I think the research we've seen shows that if you don't add some sort of sentence like that, people tend to give you a rosier output of what they did in the last election or, or not.
Why would you say voting is hard? I, I don't know. It, to, to me, it's just, it's offensive.
I mean, why not just ask, did you vote? Did you go in the last election? Without leading them into why they shouldn't or why, you know, it's too much time. You're, 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 you're so busy, so, so, so it's okay.
Your, your ballot was sitting on your table.
Right.
Five weeks.
So, so what I, by my response was you get a more accurate accounting if you have that lead-in.
Oh, if you're acknowledging that not everybody does.
That there are reasons that people don't vote and normalize that that's acceptable, you're more likely to get a more accurate representation.
If we didn't put that, everyone would vote, or it would be 100% voter turnout based on this, without that.
Some people don't.
What is the point of asking the question? What information do you want to ascertain?
Doesn't take that much time.
Especially when it's sent to your own.
That's good. I mean, we already know it's kind of back to my statistics. We know the statistics on basic crime. We know what our voter participation is in our term. So those are.
And, and without going to target residents based on who voted and who, so, so we're not gonna use this data in any way that I, I could see. So I don't know why we would want to ask.
So if we were going to target for a ballot campaign or some other items, knowing those that voted and what their preferences are gives us more information as we craft ballot questions in the future. That's, that's one example.
See, I don't think we should target based on who votes. I think morally, there's some.
Reason why you would say, do you have an education of a PhD or a master's, right? You need to understand who you're targeting and who you're talking to. Is, it's just a piece of a data point to me that says, you know, you know, 50% voted in Westminster. And then now, you know, I have an understanding of what age level and what zip code there are. And so I just think it's a data point, not necessarily to be used as a target, but to be used as a point of information for us to make a whole.
Well, and they, and I mean, don't you think it's powerful to know just for numbers of it? Say 25% of the people who responded to this say they didn't vote. So they think it was important enough to fill out the survey, but they didn't think it was important enough to go vote in our municipal election. Actually, I think that's an interesting data point to me. I mean, you, you're not gonna know why, but I mean, I feel like that there's some interest at least in, in knowing how many people filled this out, didn't think it was worth their time to vote in our election.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't like the way the question is worded, but
I'm all for data and more, and data mining and, and using that, but I, I think there are certain lines. So like a PhD or, or not has a lot more consequence than for a city, right? Than, did you vote or not? For us as politicians or for other groups and organizations, it's pretty interesting to know that information. But I don't think a city government should be using voting data to target for any reason, but that's just, that's, that's, that's not a hill I, I die on, so it's just.
Well, then we drafted questions for this current ballot that had five, I think five or six different items on it. And I think it's helpful to understand who is participating and who isn't. And, you know, I, I think you've said this multiple times, is how do we get those not participating to join in the conversation, right? So I think it's just a, a, a data point that says, you know, here's a snapshot of Westminster who sent out a survey to. I don't think it's necessarily used as a derogatory question that says, we want your information to understand, right? Like, it's just.
That's fair. Yeah.
That says, you know, out of this information, this many people returned a survey and they, it's interesting, only 4% voted in that, but they returned a survey, right? So I, I just, I don't see it as.
I like your point about civic engagement, that it's possible there could be something city government could do to target. I mean, it is targeting, right? Because we're gonna, that's the only reason why we would collect it. But I, but I totally agree with you, that targeting for civic engagement, how can we increase that in various programs that we do in the future? I think that's interesting. So, yeah, you're right.
But what I said a different way, I mean, think about how powerful that is. They don't think their vote counts for council, but they think a survey counts. I mean, to me, I'd be interested to know how many people would do that, because I'm, it's just, it's interesting that they, well, and it shows the weight that they think goes into the survey. They think someone's done with them, they're taking the time to do that, but they didn't vote. I mean, that's interesting. Do, do we, do we have statistics? What was the, how many people that didn't vote in the election prior? Because this was on the last survey, right? That's not a new question, because we didn't like the way it was phrased last time.
Yeah.
It was, I'd have to go back and.
I'd be, as a follow-up, I would be interested to know that.
And just two more. So 21.6, I agree. I don't remember who said this, but it's confusing. So the victim resilient environment, I think that was you again. But we talked about that already. And then D 12? So what is your gender, gender i- identity? I'd like to add non-binary and then have a number five be please self-describe. Because non-binary is different than transgender. And it would be more inclusive if we added that question. And that's all I got. Come on.
Counselor Baker?
Well, as you know, I, I don't think, I don't think this is money well spent. I don't think we're gonna act on it. If we can't even remember what was the question last time, what are we gonna do with this? I think this is just another study.
I'm just, I fear it's changed. We've changed consultants.
Second point, I think it's way too long. So like 160 questions to answer? And then two, and then three, I wouldn't answer a lot of these questions at the end. I know you may be curious about it, but how much I make, how does that, how does that affect how you're gonna run the city? I think we'd be much better off if we want, really want to do a survey. It's for each of the counselors to come up with a couple of questions that they might think are informative. And I would cut out most of the stuff on the, at the end. I don't think it's our business to know. I mean, as a city, we have to serve everybody. I don't care if they have a PhD or they didn't go to school at all.
Well, that's the helpfulness of having the demographic information, because it lets us know, who are we hearing from? Are we hearing from everybody?
But that doesn't change our mission. That doesn't change our obligation to serve everyone in the city.
If we can't measure whether or not we're getting, if we're doing.
We can measure how well we serve them.
If we're doing a survey, then it's a responsible thing to do to ensure that we are hearing from the people we want to hear from, that we are, in fact, hearing from all the different ranges of people in the city.
I think we're gonna hear from the people who have a beef with the city and the people who love the city. That's who we're gonna hear from.
It's usually when you have a self-selected survey, what happens?
But isn't this gonna undergo self, okay, selection?
That would be something that's not statistically relevant, that might just be, you know, posted on a website and say, hey, take our survey, and then the.
No, no, we're going to attempt to make it a random ballot survey. But it's different if we were sampling frozen food packages that were coming off the line, because we have complete control of that and we can do a real random survey. But this is a random survey we're gonna send out to folks, and then those individual of the recipients are gonna decide if they want to do it or not. And now we have a way to backstop it and try to bring some kind of really validity back into it. But this is a self, it's going to be self-select.
Well, even more important to have the demographic information.
So on that point, how many households will this go to?
Ryan, could you remind us of that number, please?
Yeah, yeah, about 1,500 in each one of the preschool districts.
So, so question, is that strictly off of a cost thing? And is the cost driven by printing and mail? Because the city did send out something that's about as big for election to every single household. So is there a, a reason beyond cost to not send this to every house and allow every household opportunity to answer?
Ryan, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I think it would primarily just be cost. It would be a, a, a very expensive maneuver, I think. I mean, I'm guessing if you understand the printing and mailing costs of the ballots. I mean, I'm guessing if you understand the printing and mailing costs of the ballots, uh, that should give you a pretty good indication of what it would be like to print and mail these surveys. But one thing that I'm not sure every ballot has is the postage paid return envelope. Um, so it's postage out and postage in uh both ends.
So what's the cost?
I'm looking at the household numbers right now.
You're asking for the cost to mail all households.
Forty eight thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, about forty five thousand according to the Census Bureau. It's tough to know off the top of my head, but I think it's about three dollars a survey.
Forty five thousand?
Forty eight?
Oh, the Census Bureau said forty four, forty four zero nine two. Um, but um it'd be well over a hundred thousand to to do that. Um, but then you have to think about the backend costs. So if, you know, of those forty four thousand, you know, if ten are returned, eight will probably be by mail, um, which would be eight thousand surveys compared to the expected nine hundred uh for data entry and verification. So there would just be a greater extent at which follow-ups would occur, mailings would occur. Yeah, yeah, so it'd be, you know, quadruple, you know, maybe five times the price of, you know, what we're doing here.
And if we did that, would that add any of the statistical really validity to the survey?
Uh, you you'd reduce the the margin of error. Um, you know, you could probably base your results on the ninety nine percent level of confidence or really small margin of error still.
Versus ninety five.
So. Yeah, yeah, and and really that's just increasing margin of error, you know, as you shrink the confidence interval, your margin of error increases. Uh, but a large sample, uh, but you know, if we mailed the forty four thousand, I'd I'd expect ten to come back, um, probably or in the range. Um, and and so at ninety five percent level of confidence, you'd be looking at a sub one percent uh margin of error, uh, and it's actually the same at ninety nine percent level of confidence. So confidence would increase um for sure. Uh, but dealing with a margin of error of about four percent based on the results we collect, uh, there shouldn't be any concerns to to statistical validity and and the demographics are meant there uh to ensure representation to a degree uh to what we know the community to exist as. And while there will be some self-selection, we'll have those folks who same day will take the survey online. Uh, our methodology and follow-up attempts account for that. So uh we basically will wear you down uh into taking the survey. You know, some some very staunch libertarians might uh squeak through or or get through the cracks uh in some communities. But for the most part, we believe we do a very good job uh of filtering into the community, getting uh all types of respondents uh to reply. And some of the the voter question uh can be very interesting, um especially when understanding, you know, folks that are unlikely to vote may also be unregistered to vote. Um, and and then thinking about how maybe some of those crime and safety statistics concern those folks that are voters compared to those who are not um can make for interesting reading. Um, but having that data point is also pretty good in in there as well. Uh, just to ensure that we did encompass, you know, close to the range. And I think that's the intent for having that particular question in the survey uh is to make sure that we did again meet meet some of those qualifiers in terms of representation.
Does it always laughable the amount to people whether or not it's statistically valid, but to have under a thousand in a city of this size just seems like it's always a point of contention to people. So how do you get, you know, more volume of return? It seemed like more volume out would get you more volume of return. Maybe the whole city's not worth it, but is there a number that's greater than what we've been doing that's going to give us better results? Sounds like it's not.
Forty five.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not significantly changing the margin of error.
Is there a reason why we're not? I think we.
Zip code.
Why not just ask for the neighborhood, where neighborhood do you live in? That's more interesting to me than zip code.
Don't think that a lot of people would know how to answer that. I I live in a countryside area. Some people might say countryside because countryside, but it actually encapsulates like there's like eight or nine subdivisions that people consider countryside.
Wouldn't hurt though.
I think that's pretty important to a lot of residents who live in neighborhoods who feel that they're silenced and they don't have a voice. Let's hear what they have to say.
Ryan, are the results coded to the address of the respondent?
Yeah, yeah, so I think we discussed this. That question's not necessary, although I know the city's been collecting it, so it is good to kind of keep that collection going if you have the data already. Um, we geolocate the home address of each respondent to the block level, uh, which is pretty much going to be your neighborhood levels. So you'll be able to see it as somewhat neighborhood levels where responses are coming from. Uh, when it comes to aggregation of those responses for the heat shaded maps, you know, we can have discussions on how those look or if your team, you know, has mapping, mapping capabilities. We can always just provide those results and they can kind of shade and layer uh as needed. But yes, everybody, uh, the sample is is residentially address based. Uh, so everybody that conducts the survey or completes the survey will be required to input their home address uh for the purpose of validating that response to the address of the of the the home that was selected.
Can I clarify? It's fifteen hundred per each school district, so forty five hundred. Okay.
Which is approximately ten percent of the the community. Uh, and while, yes, academics would love to knock on every door and and do all that, you know, you're looking at maybe near two hundred thousand uh for the complete project to do it with our methodology. Um, and and like we just discussed, the reliability of the results really wanes. And when you start to think about what these results are meant to accomplish for the city, um, sometimes that one percent margin of error just doesn't make much of a difference when you're talking about four percent uh margin of error. Um, and for this type of planning effort, we feel really confident in the methodology and a lot of other communities nationwide uh do as well. So the results will be reliable to an extent. I understand one of the councillor's uh reservations and um, th- those are definitely uh possibilities in all data research such as this. Uh, and random sampling can find self-selectors. Uh, but our follow-up attempts are what kind of get us up and over that hurdle. So you will at at first see some of those stark uh into the bell curve responses. But as we near in on three hundred per district, nine hundred total, we will see a leveling of that bell curve kind of in the middle there.
Councillor Baker, did you have anything else? Councillor Seymour?
I just want to know that the voting question was on twenty twenty, twenty twenty survey. And seventy two percent that participated in the survey said, yes, they do vote. Uh, or at least voted in the in the twenty seventeen election. So, uh, so that was on the previous uh survey. Uh, the only thing I had was to note that uh question thirty, if we could do just an open-ended question that says anything else we should know that we haven't covered instead of um leading into what's the single most important thing that we can improve for quality of life? Um, I just think that, you know, a lot of these are leading in itself. And I think that just having an open-ended uh thought as far as um what are we missing that we maybe not have addressed on this um would be helpful to ask.
For me, as you've heard, I just think it's way too long, but in ten three and ten eleven, we have had COVID for two years and this week, the fire and police are just opening up for the first time their alum, their public safety, um, fire and police, um, citizen alumni education, they haven't been able even to the alumnis, they haven't been able to have meetings. They haven't had their education programs. So why would we put that in there when they haven't been able to because of COVID? Just wipe those out and because they haven't been able to do it. So that's, those are two questions that should not be in there.
That one?
Ten point oh three and a ten point eleven.
Fire education programs and police safety education programs.
They're just now opening up, August twenty.
That's not academies, though, I mean, not necessarily.
Haven't been able to do any education.
But we're asking, are those things valuable? Not currently valuable, but value, not. I I see that as a broader question, not.
Says satisfaction with, they haven't had them for two years.
Yeah, I'm kind of in between both of you because I feel like it'd be worth asking, are they valuable? But it doesn't, to your point, I feel like this question saying, are you satisfied with them? But if they haven't been there for you, then.
Fire education, still been working with every elementary school through just little Zoom meetings. You know, so those things been going on.
That's true.
So.
Maybe, can you add something like, to the extent they've been available with COVID restrictions or something? For that question, if it's tends to do that.
The only other thing with all of the police pieces, there is nothing that talks about why we haven't been able to um. People know they've had the crimes. We've shown them the crimes and people don't understand yet why they aren't going to jail. So still the education, if there's a question about, do you want, do you know the state laws that are prohibiting um uh people being jailed? I mean, the, we just made, March first, we just had a bunch more felonies move down to misdemeanors. That's a fact of life that was through state legislature, folks. We didn't do these things, so we can't be held accountable. We can only do what we can do by law. So I think question twenty two, because um, it does, it is what it, we're governing, why should be number one instead of twenty two? My thoughts for the survey. You guys need all of that.
I have a quick question. Um, I know that we've talked about like a lot about what we should be adding into the survey and or removing. So I'd like to, what's your point just now? I'd like to understand where we're, where we were, are at with that. But to, um, maybe the education piece of it needs to be its own um, it's own part as far as what we provide in the service. Because uh I can tell you that um a lot of people don't know that we have a variety of different education programs, including sustainability or um garden in the box. A lot of the programag stuff that we offer that um unless you're really involved with the city, you just, you don't know that we offer it. So maybe the question would be that, you know, did you know that we as a city offer fire education programs? And and police education programs and um and sustainability programs? Because in them, we can understand if if we're reaching enough people to understand, are we actually educating? I think maybe that, maybe to your point, that kind of wraps in. So here's what we provide, did you know?
I love that.
I'm curious, this is something more or less. I think it would be interesting to give this survey to people who serve on our boards and commissions separately and just see how they create things. Um, to, however, I'm in point, some of the feedback that I got about my questions on the environmental advisory board and their work over the last year. Was surprised to see that some of the things they wanted to work on, the answer was that we're already working. Which I'm I'm not sure if that's because of their direction or because they didn't realize that those things were happening at the same time. They were trying to say that those are things the city should prioritize. Um, so making sure that we're not working in silos and people not knowing about things available, you know, is.
What would you love clarification on?
Well, I I think there's a probably maybe a couple of of roads to go here. So um we can certainly take all the, if you're all in agreement with the feedback that's been given, then we can proceed to work with um Mr. Murray on those changes. If you wanted to go specifically through each one to uh, which has come up as well, we we could do that. So I I just, if you, what you've heard tonight, you're all in general agreement, we we can work with that.
Well, I've heard a lot of things that I don't agree with. Uh, and I know I'm the outlier when I think this is terrible. The one caveat I want to give is if this is a survey and we're asking people questions, it's not time to educate. We're just going to make a terrible survey. It reminds me of a survey the city put out about, do you want clean water at a high price or dirty water at a not high price? Was that educating them?
Well, I think that, and I agree with you, but I think the point was understanding these points so that if it was could provide education such as impacts of state legislation on crime.
Can we do that in the city edition?
Well, we weren't saying to do it in here, though. We were saying we wanted to gain those data points so that we knew those were things we wanted to push out in the city edition or wherever. It was my point. If it was somebody else, I agree with you that that's not the place to educate them.
I thought the suggestion was to have a section in this, ask them, how aware are you of X, Y, Z? So we can gauge their awareness of our programs.
Wasn't that your suggestion?
Yeah.
My concern is that it makes the survey even longer.
That's what I said, is we just had a lot tonight, like, I don't know.
Maybe we should hear the takeaways that you wrote.
That's a good idea.
We like, we've done polling in the past.
What did you hear?
What would be helpful for all of you to, I can go through what we've, we've, we've written down for changes and reflect that back to you if that would be helpful.
Do you want to do that or do you want to do it in a format we can read? And you have it before you and you send back personally to them if it's a go.
And then we can, the the advantage to that is then we can see what it's done to the survey. That that because, you know, some of the perception is that, holy cow. Yeah, we've, we've added page eight point seven five.
I get that, but I guess the the concern is if there were a lot of things and if there's not four people saying, yeah, that's a thing. We really want it to end up on a survey to come back to us and then be stricken back off of there.
If we got it, what do we have on Monday's agenda?
Uh, coming Monday? That was gonna, would we have time to bring it back for one, bring it back as a.
I don't know your timeframe.
Final.
Are you up against something? Our timeframe is your timeframe. It's just obviously, you know, we, we want to get it right and we want this to reflect your, your desires. So um uh, we can chat with Ryan tomorrow, um, Mr. Andrews, if that works for you. And I think we can bring it back next, I I Monday, um, with a red line version, if that would be helpful.
I will tell you that the previous survey that was sent out has a hundred and fifteen tables of data, which means that there's a hundred and, about a hundred and fifteen data points on this current survey. So.
I I was counting roughly on my notes. I think I've heard requests for thirteen new questions. So just to give you an order of magnitude.
I would vote for narrowing down for staff right now. But if we all want to wait, then.
Really one hundred questions? More than one hundred questions?
Well, I would see what they have. See what we have going forward because some of them were cut, some of them were reworded.
Okay, let, I see tired eyes, so let's get going.
So you want a red line version back next?
No, I hear them saying.
All right, so, okay, so what I have, and Chris jump in, is on question number one, add possible housing utilities and food. That was uh councillor Aziyadi's request. So um, do you want to to go on those one by one to?
I like the cost of living as it relates to our services we can provide, right? Like our city services or utilities. Um, we, we don't have control over food and or housing prices. So I would, if we're, if we're adding it, I'd like to define it as. So I would, if we're, if we're adding it, I'd like to define it as it relates to the services we provide.
I agree, and the only utility we provide is water and sewer.
Yeah, I agree. It needs, I, I like it as long as it's in confines of what we can control.
Which leads to another issue.
Do we add, do we add water and sewer rates later in the survey? I can't remember.
Yeah.
Be specific.
I mean, if it's gonna be that narrow, it's probably just been repetitive. This cost of living, I think, is getting out of much broader.
But then, um, that also leads to, should we ask the question about school districts? Because that's completely out of our control, too.
That's true.
And the water section doesn't ask about cost.
That's where we could put that.
I think cost of living is important. Just generally, I mean, we can leave it generic or tie it to.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be within our scope of.
Within our scope or whatever, but.
Yeah.
It's important as to quality of life.
I don't think people are gonna be thinking about water when you think of cost of living. Because you think about something much broader. Think about your bills overall.
So should we restate that as overall cost of living? That, the question is perceptions of the city, so overall cost of living?
I would vote to take it out.
Yeah, I would, too. Or, or leave it out.
Whole question one?
No. Cost of living to question one.
Others?
I'd, I'd want to keep it in there if it was broad.
I don't think it's narrow, defined narrowly enough to our scope.
Mr. Baker?
Oh.
So out. Okay, thank you. And, um, Mayor, to your point, you wanted to move, um, uh, number 22, which is all the strategic planning, up to number one.
Well, I just, that, that's our number one thing that we do need feedback on. That's going to be our, our vision and goals for the next, uh, year. Should know, number one, make sure they read it first. Number two, get their feedback. But others?
I think it's a good idea.
I don't know why you put it 22. I mean, maybe you have a good reason.
Okay, so we'll move that to number one. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to question, okay, we made the correction on number five. Um, but that's the first page. Um, on question seven, we wanted to add.
Can I back up to?
Oh, sorry.
On our discussion about having control, do we want to leave 1.9 in there, overall quality of public schools in the city? I mean, this is not a realtor survey of, of ranking. It's, we get this a lot when you're talking, people want this fixed or want that fixed, and it's not in our scope.
Maybe that is major city services.
Yeah, and it's not a major city service.
I, I can see it, it's helpful probably to our economic development folks, but in terms of our.
It, it furthers. Yeah, it furthers some people's belief that we run the school districts.
Okay, so cut 10-9?
Oh.
Uh, 4-9.
4-9, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Question seven, we wanted to add overall city responsiveness. For serving. Okay. On, um, question number nine, um, instead of current information, relevancy or recency of information, though it's regarding use of the city's website, please rate the following aspects. Um, so we had, it stated as current information, and the suggestion is to change that to relevancy of information.
I'm okay with that.
There's been times where you couldn't find current information, so I, and I've been, I would go looking for related. And for months, they had recall on there, and that had gone and passed, and I was looking for current, and.
Yeah, if you want relevance, yeah, I think I need.
What, what you're looking for, but I wanted current.
Or current and relevant. Current and relevant information.
We can put both.
Do we need two lines or just?
I'm agnostic whether it's two.
I'm trying not to add any lines here.
Current slash relevant?
Ampera Sam.
Yeah, ampersand. Less, less lines.
So combine them? Uh, number 10, under public safety, uh, services, what I heard is that we want to go ahead and strike, uh, due to the COVID uh, fire education programs, so 10, 10-3. Um. And 10-11.
On public safety.
And if we want, uh, so let me just, let me just stop there, that's the consensus, to strike those two.
I'm okay.
I'm, I'm okay, yeah, because that's a big, that helps shorten that for now, and that's a big block of questions right there. When you put it back.
Okay, great, thank you.
When you strike things out that are historic questions, because those are questions that we asked in the past, I understand not asking them now, but can we make sure that we understand that in the future, if we want to bring that back after we've been, had two years of the programs being back?
Yeah, we will retain all the history on these.
Great.
Thank you. The fire inspection programs, which is 10-4, uh, what do we mean by this? So we want to clarify that as, um, well, uh, for businesses. Okay.
I think I heard clarify or take out.
Yeah.
Your choice.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, number 12, we want that just to read, instead of perception of, to safety and security. Right? Um, and then we wanted to move, uh, number 12-6, 12-6, overall filling and safety unit community, to move that to number one. Okay? And, uh, for number seven, when we say property crimes, um, my note is to break out, break them out by their, by the different ones that are listed there. By burglary, theft, vandalism, auto theft.
Just added five more questions.
Yeah, I'm just throwing back in where you took out.
I'm gonna get some more taken out then. Here we go.
Okay. All right, and then for number nine, the same thing for violent crimes, breakout, rape, robbery, assault.
We didn't have murder in there.
Because you can't, you can't answer it. You're dead.
It's dark.
Can we, can we edit that part?
Continue.
Okay, so that's okay. Um, along the, and, and I don't, I will work with Ryan where to put this in, is some kind of a question along the lines, are you aware of state? And I, this is just me, me broad ball, fleshing it right now. Are you aware of state laws that have changed regarding police ability to arrest or detain? Or something of that nature? Somewhere, and we'll put that in the appropriate place in the survey. Okay. Okay, on number.
If applicable, needs to come out of number three. I also have that.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, of what, 12?
12, yes.
Can we maybe take out of your community? Because it doesn't make sense in my community. I don't have a downtown.
In the downtown area, period.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Got you. If applicable.
I'd always had to, to take it out completely, number three.
Okay, moving.
I kind of like it, just because people visit there.
From a destination standpoint?
Also, we're changing this to mean the downtown.
Like, just downtown, not like downtown in your community, because that, to me, means like.
Yeah.
Where it's, right?
You say downtown, I think Denver, so.
Maybe, should we clarify that to say in downtown Westminster?
I think you should.
Yeah.
That seems like what you're asking for, for.
Just in the side, like, there is somebody that owns that name. Not Westminster.
On question number 13, we want to add a location of city parks. Okay? Okay.
Um, is that setting up expectation that we can just put a park anyplace?
Well, the other place to address that would be in eh, 19, maybe? Where, where was it? Um. Now, where was it? 21?
24 access. That we were going for.
I think it'll give us a good data point.
I want to set up.
Oh, it was 25.
Expectations that can't be met.
If they answer no, then we have to tear down.
That's correct. It was, okay.
It's a little more complainy, available in number 25 versus expectation.
That, and then 13-12, number of parks and recreation amenities.
How'd you pronounce it?
Amenities?
Thank you.
Amenanenities?
It's 10-10. All bets are off.
Salables in there.
So, Councilor Namella, you're correct, you did, to offer that as 25-13, under unavailability of trails or connections, and then there was a note to, you know, access to park spaces or combine that. So we have a couple of options. So if you want it in there, we can work with our consultant to make sure it isn't one of those unless you have strong, you know, you have a, a specific place you want to put it.
Like this, experts work on it?
Thank you. On 19, utilities and recycling services, uh, we wanted to, uh, Councilor Namella suggested more sites for recycling, some kind of a rating, a rate, or a question along those lines.
I don't know. My concern is that there's been in the past recycling areas that were promised that didn't end up coming to fruition, so are we again setting an expectation that we're gonna do something? Or, I guess, the question for the council is, if it comes back and they say they want more areas, are we, are we willing to take action?
13 areas elaborate when, in, ready to go.
We're asking about quality of water pressure, pressure in your home. That's costly to upgrade. So are we willing to, I mean, it's, all of these are gonna be policy decisions. We get the information.
Water, we're already delivering to every house.
It is within our control, though. We just have to, with that data point, we'd know whether.
I'm open to it. I'm just saying that if it comes back, then I'm gonna be saying, all right, let's do something with it.
Guess I'll get my hat out and start collecting.
You all heard her. She's on the record.
Um, another one under that was, uh, to add something regarding recycling and composting available to, to residents, curb site. Curb site, recycling and composting.
Negatory for me.
Out of our scope.
Okay.
Yes. That's one yes.
Two yeses?
Those thumbs up or down quick?
Um, we, uh, you provided direction for us on 21-06, to rework the city of Westminster provides a rich and resilient environment question, so we will do that. Okay?
Can I, can I ask on that one, though? That words, those words are straight from the vision. Pull that straight from the vision. Are you comfortable with staff adding, adding more definition behind that?
What question is this?
It is.
06.
This is in our vision?
That's why I'm here.
Rich and resilient environments.
And we were okay with it.
First economy, economy, rich and resilient environments, and strong sense of community and belonging.
I'm hearing leave it.
Yeah.
Without any explanation.
I know, I'm not gonna undo, unravel that string.
Great.
That was your thing.
Uh, the next one is that on 23, we had a discussion on, uh, clarifying all three of those questions. So residential growth, have a note to add clarity around that, commercial growth, re, retail, employment, and density. That we needed to clarify that. And there was also another comment, um, do we want to have adaptive reuse or scrape and rebuild approach?
Well, we're gonna rework these questions. I would be much better off if you asked, would you like more apartments? Or would you like more single-family homes?
That's like that question on the water you don't want.
Uh, but what does residential mean? And residential means both, doesn't it?
It does. Means all of the above.
I'm actually fine with it the way it is, probably. First type?
This is like the crime question to me, like, you know, if you're, it's so broad. It doesn't do you any good. And we're not, I, you know.
You want to scrap all three?
I would. If you're not gonna ask it right, don't ask it.
I see, it'd be saying, okay.
Scrub it.
Want to scrap it? It makes it shorter. Scrap it? Going?
Yeah, if we're not gonna delineate every type, then it's no value.
23 is gone.
Uh, on 25, we again wanted to break out 25-01 by each separate one, and, uh, vandalism, graffiti, drugs, and also, um, we have homelessness in here, but we wanted to, we talked about drug activity in homes and auto theft. So did we want to break them out and add a drug activity in homes and auto theft?
I see three spots. She could build up three.
What do you want to do?
Did we break it up off top?
What's the proposal?
To separate out 25-01 to, one question for vandalism, one question for graffiti, one question for drugs, one question for auto theft, and one question for drug use in homes.
I think that you split it out earlier. This is probably can stay the way it is. Although I wonder why we're asking our taxes. That's a voter question.
You have to, we're not gonna change that without going after voters, so.
It's a silly question. Of course, they're too high.
Well, you don't have to go, you're just gonna change that. Only if they were too low.
He's looking to raise McGinn.
All right, so for the two proposals, break, break them out or leave them alone?
Leave them alone.
I see two leave them alone.
Yeah, leave them.
Leave them. I'm gonna leave them. We're leaving them alone.
All this work to make it shorter.
Okay, on question 30, uh, instead of what do you think is the most, single most important thing the city could do to improve the quality of life, we want, uh, basically, is there anything else the city should be doing that's addressed in the survey and leave it as an open-ended question?
Yep.
Good, go.
Okay. Um, on question D13, we want to take out the first sentence and just ask, did you vote in the 2021 city council?
I will say, this is how it was presented in the last survey, but the exact wording, except for the date. Oh.
And I didn't like it then.
Okay, how many want to change it?
I think we should take it out completely.
One, take it out completely.
I'd leave it.
Take it out.
I'd keep it.
I mean, Chris, Chris convinced me with it.
Keep, I'm for keeping it.
You keeping it, three keeping it?
Keep it as is.
So you have five to.
As is with that. Okay. On D12, we want to change number four to non-binary and, uh, change five to self-describe. On D twelve, we want to change number four to non-binary and change five to self-described.
Can I just say that I appreciate that one wrote in there last year that they were identified as a honey badger?
A honey badger.
And we did have.
That was an open-ended question. I appreciated it.
We had a discussion on adding a section on education programs. As a decision or some thought to maybe add in, but I'll check with all of you for clarity.
I hear a give up.
I really want this to have first name, last name.
That's not the question. The question is, are you okay?
Just leave it. That's good.
So we don't need to add that.
Yeah, run while you can. I have one more from our lovely city attorney who mentioned this. So in twenty-six, diversity, equity, inclusion, part four references. The city equitably addresses in education. We took out education previously because that wasn't a service area. Do you want to take it out here as well?
I, I agree. I agree. I see enough of that nodding. It's out.
Thank you, Dave.
We have an attorney.
Anything else?
I just want to clarify next step. So do you want us to bring this back with these changes redlined next Monday as an information only? So you can see the changes?
Information only.
Or do you want a presentation? Yeah, information only. Okay.
Enough of your time. I think we've said what we need. It would just be nice to have a clean copy.
Okay, we'll show you redline and final.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. Back to budget.
Councilor Emmons says.
I mean, I was tired.
And Ryan, thank you.
It just went out.
Throw him in the ice baths. There's Nathan.
Just a staff report.
Staff report.
May I introduce mayor, this topic? The purpose of tonight is to talk to council about the budget process. And we really set it up as a key piece of input that we'd like to get from you is to affirm or not our recommendation to continue with a one-year cycle for the next two cycles instead of converting back to a two-year budget process. So that was the primary purpose of tonight. And then we lay out what that would look like in terms of a potential schedule and lay out some key dates for you. So what we didn't come prepared terribly for was getting into the budget details for elements of the budget. And I apologize if that, if that was set up to not be the best approach tonight. But really, we were thinking if we can land the process and that we're landing on a one or a two-year cycle, then staff will tool towards that really quickly and get and structure an engagement process with you to get your input on the budget, whichever of those cycles you select.
Are people okay with going to two, the next two years, each a year, since we're not sure where we're, where we are with budget?
Yeah, I think that makes it continues to make us, you know, in place. And then after we get some combing, we can go back to two years.
What is the benefit of doing two years? I know that you kind of have the, the outlook for what it is for two years, but I, I appreciate a one-year process that I could be educated on what the benefits are for a two-year.
Having lived through two years, it meant that your staff was, they can always tweak it and they, and they did, but we didn't have to go into the depth in each area. We just had to tweak the areas that needed tweaking. Example, after we had the huge recession and downsized, we, we made an appointment every year to ask every department head, all of the levels of workers. Did we cut too deep? Did we need to bring back? Those were the kinds of questions. And so those were one and one here and one there. And we were able to just discuss that. And the rest of the budget went through the way it was, it had been scheduled. So you just don't, because here's what we did. In June, you started the process. You have take your pick. Water usually was first because they have to set those rates to know what they're going to do down here. So in June, we had the water presentation during study session. The next study session, we'd have another department. So by September, when we had to have our budget retreat and look at everything, we had had everything in viable segments instead of one big day where we got it all regurgitated to us and looked, y'all looked worse than you do right now after a day of that. And it was. Your eyes are like this. I'm reading your body language. So, so you were able to retain all of these pieces. Then when it comes together, they're pretty sure where everything's been ahead. They do any last tweaking in that September meeting and you're ready to vote in October. I don't, I, I saw some, I didn't see us looking at June as early as working on some of the stuff, but I just share. Doing it in bite-sized pieces helps community understand because they're listening during the study sessions. And it, it just helps at the end process that you, we all get it much better and we aren't overloaded with what did we do at the first of the meeting?
I, being that I've been through it as well, I think it's less stressful from my perspective. I'm curious from staff's perspective, like I'm fully supportive of doing this right now. And I know why we would do it for the next couple of cycles. But I have to imagine on like a normal year's cadence, it's easier for department heads to not have to do the full budget every year versus every two years.
Yeah, I think so. And I would defer to our team, but I think on the, the reasoning behind the recommendation tonight is twofold primarily. One is we've come through COVID and a lot of things we're throwing up in the air and are landing back down. And we, we just don't feel confident that we would come in and confidently set for you some two-year budget projections. That there's a lot of things that are moved, that have moved. And we're now wanting to, to make sure we understand those movements. And the second is this is a new city council and a new administration. And we felt that for transparency and trust building and credibility that we, we might be better off building a one-year budget with council. That, that allows you the most control and discretion in the first year. And then, then it gives us a second chance to come right back in and re, and reset that if we missed the mark on a few things. And so that was the, the primary second reason for recommending this approach with you.
My big question to you, Deputy Door, is with everything going on in Adams with money, are we positive that we know exactly, especially the ARPA money and everything? And we have everything so that if there's any question later down the road, because I heard another city got too little or too much and there's some chaos throughout a little bit in different areas. Are we just rock solid with what we've been given? How we've spent it, et cetera, et cetera. We have our own paper trail to know we're okay?
The short answer is yes. But until the second allotment is in our treasury and our control as a city, and that'll be, I think, in the May timeframe, if I have that about right, then we want to make sure that we've got those funds in hand and have had the council's opportunity to reconfigure those. I also wanted to address one of the comments made about staff. We surveyed our department heads and key budget personnel across the city and got very consistent, clear feedback from those team members who aren't here tonight that a one-year budget offers great opportunity for staff initiatives in our public safety, public works and utilities, park and recreation, core services to make adjustments from year to year as you had described, and to initiate projects and so forth on an annual basis. They've had a chance to experience that over the last couple of years and feel that they've had a real chance to be effective that way in service delivery. So near unanimous consent, I think, across our various departments. And then yeah, in terms of Rescue Plan Act, we can look forward to receiving those and give great confidence about where those can go under your direction.
The, the Rescue Plan funds will be direct deposited from the federal government, right to our, right to us.
Yeah. Well, I think we registered in May, somewhere in there, that we would receive those direct from the treasury. So, yeah.
But so on your, on your point, I'm glad to hear that it's favorable to department heads. However, there's been a fair amount of turnover for department heads. So how many of those department heads have done a two-year at their level?
Yeah, we surveyed our existing, well, point taken at that level. But they've been a part of the budget process as senior leaders in our organization over the last number of years. You know, our division chiefs, division managers are all very much a part of the development of the city's budgets. So they certainly understand. In fact, to some degree, they've been probably closer to the budget process in terms of the fine level of details over the last four, five, eight years in their experience. So all of those interim managers have very good experience in our organization.
When, when was this survey?
In the last thirty to forty-five days before we brought this proposal to the council.
And may I add, you know, two of our interim department heads are, are these two gentlemen, and they've both taken on those two additional roles. Two are brand new to the city, Lindsay Kimball and Tomas Hora Mishler. They've joined us. They would benefit from a one-year budget process because they would bring in their new perspective and energy into, into the budget cycle. All our interim department heads are former division managers with us. So internal promotions and they've, our division managers are key to our budget process. So they will bring their, we actually see a, a positive uplift in terms of that kind of energy infusion into our budget process as well.
That makes sense. So I guess I'm being the mayor, a nice point about seeing the two-year versus this. Is this something that you think is going to be short-term? Or you think in two years, you're going to want to stick with this? Or you're going to want to probably reevaluate after we go through it for a couple more years?
I think as a city manager, whoever that's going to be, will also be able to have a voice in it, whoever that is.
I would, I just being part of a one-year process consistently, I think it offers us a better ability to be nimble in a lot of situations. And I feel a two-year process, I know, I understand that it takes a lot of staff work and council work, but as a council body, we're here to, to do that. So I would like to continue to see a one-year process. However, if we do go back to a two-year process, I would like it to align with election cycles because when I was elected in twenty nineteen, I was now in a two-year cycle that was budgeted that I couldn't be a part of coming into a new council. So I would like us to consider that if we, if that does go back to that process. And so I'd also like us to consider that if we look at, now, I've been in a weird council, or at least us two. And I mean that in the most respectful way because of COVID.
So Sarah's part of that council, too.
No. So for example, so I mean, we had our strategic plan in what, July of twenty twenty? It was so weird, like just the process of it and the timing and environment that we were in. But if we look at our strategic plan yearly, our budgeting should align with our strategic plan. So if we are doing a strategic plan yearly, I'd like that that yearly budgeting process to align instead of the two-year, the two-year cycle, if that makes sense. So that's just kind of my thoughts as far as, and that's why I kind of wanted to understand the pros and cons as far as two-year versus one-year. I still like the one-year idea for budgeting because I will say that the last budget cycle that we went through was the most productive, was the most helpful, was the most, whatever staff did to rework it and just make sure that it was aligned with council. I think it was out of the two times that I've cycled through the process, it was the most beneficial out of the two. So for what that's worth, I appreciated last time and, and how it was written at least. It was very full of point and very to the point. So.
Councilor Baker?
And also, I think, don't we have to, in this setting here, decide if we're going to use a zero-based method to assemble the budget? And don't we have to put on dollar goals for that budget? Because I'd like us to spend less money in our new budget than we're spending in this budget. And I think we can do that, one, by putting a goal on, and they need to know this now. One, by putting a goal on, and two, deciding if we're going to use a zero base, where we go back and build a budget for each department from the ground up. Isn't that your concept of a zero base?
I don't understand. I don't know where that, that term, I don't think I've ever said that as far as, I understand the, the process of zero-based budgeting and understanding, especially with our utility, that we have as much revenue that we need to operate the utility efficiently. I don't think I've ever mentioned the fact that we should be zero-based because it doesn't necessarily make sense with what we have programmatically and what we serve for our city. So that, to me, at least the definition that I have, is not the most prudent for this type of budget.
But zero-based budgeting, also, you, you remove some of the, some of the annual assumptions that get built into budgeting. As you go, okay, this department has this budget this year, and traditionally, that budget goes up five percent. So you step back from that type of, it's, it's not just a, it's not just formula. It, it is the, the mindset of that. Okay. Why, why do we have this program? And how do we build a budget around that? Not traditional government kind of budgeting is that, okay, we've got here, we've got, we've got this kind of increase, and then we're just going to add five percent to that. So that, that's what I want to avoid, too. And we, I mean, we, we put it in our strategic plan. We have a great starting point. Thrift. That, that is, we, you know, we want to see a thrifty budget. And, and that was something that we spent a great deal of time talking about what, how important that word was, too. I disagree that we don't, I don't have enough knowledge to give them a dollar amount right now. I mean, would, do you have a dollar amount in mind?
Four, four of the years ago, we ran the city roughly the same population, maybe three thousand people more, but it's like adding extra customers. It's not a linear line. But we ran this city with nine hundred and forty employees. I can't imagine why we're not running it with the same nine hundred and forty employees. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't have the same number of employees, but we, we're running with something like nine hundred and fifty. Did you say, right now, really with all the vacancies? I don't know how many we, we hired. So why would we have, why would we go to the authorized a thousand and ninety-two? Is that what the king is right now? Thousand and ninety-two. If we ran it effectively with nine hundred and forty.
Partly, too, you have to look at the services that we provide as well, right? So you have to look at the number of, because what I don't want to have happen is us cut employees and then our services and our responsiveness goes down because of, of employees that we cut. I don't think it should be necessarily a thought that we just cut employees. It needs to be, it needs to be smart and responsible on, okay, is it the services that we cut? Because if it's a service incidentally, then it goes into employees, right? I think it needs to be an overall approach as far as what are we providing? Is it efficient? Is there areas that, that need to be cut? I think that that's what they're going to come back with us in a more detailed budget line, line item that says we could cut here, we can't cut here, here's some, some options for council. I just don't think that it's right right now responsible to just say, we need a twenty percent employee reduction cut. I feel like that's, that will, with the volatility that the city is in currently, with people leaving. with people leaving, as an employee who was in a government sector, that's, or any business, let's put it that way, it's very unnerving as far as, am I next? Right? It's very, I would like to stabilize Westminster, understand our budget, understand how we each play a a role and a thumbprint in that, and then say, here's items that we can cut. We just cut 30, $15,000 today with adding the CC4CA, right? Like, that's something that we can look at. It's a programmatic thing that we can cut 15,000, we didn't cut employees. So I'd rather look at it holistically than say, well, we're cutting employees.
Mayor Protem?
Along that line, I don't have any problem with us looking and seeing where we've grown too much. I think we've shared a fair amount of feedback about what I consider areas where we've become top-heavy. But much like Counselor Ammons, just to cut, to save, I don't think is proper. It's how service levels is everything. If I, you know, if I, some of that is what's going on on the ground in terms of, say, for crime, for instance, that's not going to be fixed by us cutting police officers. You know, it's quite the opposite in my mind. Same with if you had a problem with fires, which that's a lot different. But to your point, that's the kind of thing that we should be looking at. And I think about something the mayor has shared with me many times, when they went through the cuts in 2008, and I know I've harped on this before, but it's just a great example. When they did that, they did it programmatically, looking at, is this something we still need? Great example being where we were becoming bank tellers for water customers. If, and if you look at, like, say, the water utility, we're about to start gaining benefit from new technology in meters. What does that mean for our billing? Or in our tax services, if you're looking at a new program, what are we doing to pair staffing? Because a lot of times, those automations and technology mean less people pushing buttons. So I think that those are the areas where we really need to look. And we definitely don't need to look at, call them windfall years, when shopping is good and we have a good tax revenue, that we need to hire headcount that's going to cost us year over year. Those are the years that we should be looking at. When we take some of this money and put it towards our municipal court service or building, or things that we actually, you know, are one-time costs. So I would like us to get better about that, but I I don't, for all the reasons actually that Counselor Ammons said, I wouldn't want to just cut things indiscriminately to, you know, have a better bottom line.
Counselor Nemo?
Yeah, I think a lot of it has been said in terms of what Counselor Ammons and Mayor Protem said regarding just identifying, or not just going through and cutting for the sake of cutting, is just to make sure that we are looking at ways to save, but ensuring that we're providing our services. And I know we've hired in the past to enhance our, you know, water, stormwater management, right? Because we didn't have enough people to do that, to keep us in compliance. So there are cer, there are things and moves that we've made to have a better city, a better quality of open space and things like that. So to not lose those bigger picture elements of what makes a good quality of life for our residents and for our businesses. And, you know, maybe it's more of with staff as you're going through the budget process to identify for us, highlight where there are places where we think we've looked at this, we feel like we can reduce here, here's where we've done that, here's some, like Counselor Ammons was saying, here's some options to consider. So having that that thrift mentality as you're preparing the budget for us.
Counselor Sadi?
I think having that bottoms-up cost efficiency analysis is much more useful than cutting or zero-based or top-down cuts. So I agree with everything everyone has said. One year, no, zero budget. That's my vote.
Counselor Seymour?
You know, I I think right sizing is is kind of the best way to describe that, too. I mean, we don't, we don't need to get down to, how many X people do we need to do this job that has to be done? You know, but it would be nice, too, to have an idea. You bring up compliance. What, you know, what have we had to add from a state and federal compliance standpoint that we didn't have? Because those, those always get deeper, not less. And so that's just a good, you know, we don't need to be in the minutia of that. But we also need to understand, how can, how can it right-size to deliver the services that our residents expect and that we should have available? And are there things that, you know, are now obsolete? Because it's been done, the plan's done, the draft's done, you know, those kind of things, too. So, but, you know, we we had a year that we added 100 FTEs. You know, was that good, bad, indifferent? So that's, that's what I'm looking at, too. So I don't, I I don't, I don't know if there's been a discussion about, let's, but let's get, we're, we're not going to look at this and go, okay, let's just take this and chop 20%. That's, you know, that's not right either. That's, that's not our job either. But we need, we need to see the results, and we're looking at the thrift side of it, too. We spend in the right amount so that we can put money away to rebuild the municipal court center, you know, those kind of things. How do we budget that, pay cash for it?
Counselor?
I think I spoke of it as a goal. I mean, our staff needs something to aim for, something to shoot for. What is the goal now? We figure out how much tax we're going to take in, and then we figure out how to spend it?
What would your goal be?
Uh, it's really hard to put a goal because it's so difficult to get the numbers. If if we want to use, well, the Tabor numbers that were published in the election, they jumped all around. But I think 2020 was something like 179 million. The year before, that was 181 million. The year before, that was 180 million. And and this was published in the Jefferson County Tabor question on our question we put to the voters. So we had to publish the Tabor numbers. But the other numbers we get, and I would almost assume that those numbers are a combination of both operating numbers and capital expenditure numbers. We don't know exactly what they are, because it doesn't say. So maybe if we could define what the numbers are, and I think it's always easy to say, yes, I can do a better job and provide better service if I had another person in my group. And I think that's been the way most governments have run. And you look out for your friend. And so I think that, because these are the people here, the staff that are going to do all of the details and dollars and cents like that. But I mean, we save $15,000 on a $180 million budget. That's, that's not a very big impact. And there aren't any, a lot of things we can do. So that's why I think it'd be really important to give our staff the goal to shoot for. Now, they can, they be defined better and tell us what we've spent in the past in a more full way that the Tabor booklet can't do.
So, I mean, what would you propose? Like, what?
Well, well, I mean, let's find out how much truly we're spending and not take some number out of the Tabor booklet.
Do you have any areas you want Jody to look at or this group to look at?
Well, it'd be interesting if we could get what we have spent, how that's been through, like, the fast, past five years. So maybe that could be a first, because how are they going to do the budget? Are they just going to take what we did last year and add a little?
I think.
And that's a legitimate question on my part. It's not a trick question. It's not a trap. It's, how do they do the budget?
So if I think in terms of of like what I'd like to see the city go for a goal for, I would certainly need feedback from management. And but what I see a goal as is being able to operate on a certain percent of what your tax revenue is and have something left. Because at the end of the day, you could say that, you know, we want to run the city for $100 million a year. And I hope, you know, just take that crazy math. But point being is, then what happens in years where you don't have that? I mean, then you end up in like 2008 where you're, you're cutting people. So I mean, we should be trying to run something that's based off of a percent of what we're actually bringing in and not saying, oh, well, we made $180 million, so, you know, that's what it costs to run this year, being that you have this one-time cost. So like, I I don't know what that looks like for for a municipal government because it's a lot different than a for-profit entity. I know for a for-profit entity, which I've worked for plenty, it's, next year, this year, we made $100 million, next year, we want to make $125 million as our base, and then we usually shoot for $140 million, and, you know, and that's somewhere in between it. So I, maybe you guys have some input about how you could actually go for a target number and have us collaborate on what that looks like to try to drill into some savings.
A couple of thoughts to stimulate the discussion and and maybe move forward for the night in just terms of expectations. I would say, you know, the first step, or one of the key elements on the agenda item is the release of the proposed budget. And, you know, marrying that to an assessment of the permanent city manager would likely perform an assessment of the entire organization, operational efficiencies, right sizing, assessment of existing vacancies across the organization would probably be a key first step of a permanent city manager. Just knowing that also there's a solid, you know, two months from the first release of the proposed budget until it's adopted gives an opportunity for that permanent manager to really provide feedback in terms of operational efficiencies. That's the first, first thought to consider. And having done a number of budgets, and this whole team has dozens of years of experience, many years of budgeting experience. Essentially, the revenue is spent for operating capital, increasing or decreasing reserves, and then potentially making tax refunds. It's really that simple. There's no, you know, dividend to shareholders, you know, as you might have in a private company or investment, research and development, right? Project, product. So fairly simple. I think we've enumerated, I'm I'm pretty confident, you know, our, our budget did receive for the first time ever the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. You, you can't receive that from the Government Finance Officers Association unless you enumerate operations, from capital and reserves. So I think we've, I think we've got what has been asked for in terms of providing all the elements, what what is the budget to be spent on. But our task in in budget preparation for the city manager's budget is estimating the revenues, providing choices for expenditures for the council to consider and authorize. And and whether that amounts to spending less, adding more to the reserves, or spending less, making tax refunds, or any mix of things, reducing fees and charges or taxes is really, that's really kind of the government policy 101 that is driven by the the mayor and council. So we, that's the way we've approached the budget. That's the way we will approach the budget for this coming year. So hopefully that gives a little flavor for how we'll proceed and accept feedback and and make changes.
Yep.
I was going to, God, what? For me, it's overlap. Where do we have overlap? Because if you go through, it's been since 2008 that you know if you have any overlap. Why do we have X, Y, or Z job? And what is the purpose of that job? There is one area, and Jody has heard me say it at least five times, that I, I, I don't know why we have it. And I, he knows it. I don't need to repeat it. And it it's those kinds of areas that we have to understand why. Because I could put that piece against who I worked with, and for people, I know what they did. These 20, I have no idea what they are doing and why they're even there. That's on him to figure it all out and to convince me why we need whatever. So that's what I look for is, is there's reasons why we have the jobs we have. They're fulfilling X, Y, Z in the organization. We have no overlap. We're running lean and mean, and everybody knows their purpose.
So jumping off of the mayor's point, I'd like to understand how the budget relates to our strap plan. And if there's anything that doesn't relate to this, the strategic plan, then those are items that need to be looked at as potential cuts. And then, so that would be my expectation. And then, but I, to your point, Mr. Dor, I wouldn't necessarily wait for a city manager to make that assessment because we're looking at four months, three months, until we have a new city manager to really kind of dive in. So I, to the mayor's point is, this is on, like, you're all moving this forward right now. So, well, that's an important aspect that we're still kind of boiling with. I think that it's important to still move forward with what we're starting right now, so.
Thank you.
Do you have enough?
I think we do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's getting late. Thank you for, for everybody. And homework assignment to council? I need your questions that you want to ask through the night. Email them to me so Mr. Dor and I can make some sense of how that night's going to run. And he's going to help with some questions that we need to ask. And I'm not limiting you. If you need to ask the question, I need to know what it is because we've got about an hour with each person, and we need to keep things rolling, so.
Electronic meeting. If you go too long, present a new button.
Crossly hit it. What do you need, Mr.?
By tomorrow night, or by, yeah, today's Monday, by Tuesday night, so that we have Wednesday. See everybody back here with your, do we need our computers for the Zoom?
No, we'll, and we'll be up in the, where you had dinner tonight. We'll be there, and we have one screen and one camera.
Okay, so we don't, yeah, perfect.
And I'll have a, I'll have an overview email tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah.